Let's go ahead and get started here. All right, we're calling this meeting to order and beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, roll call will show that all the council members are present and accounted for. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see you in the night after a big night of elections. I'm going to call for an approval of our agenda, and I think that there's something that staff wants to add, so I'm going to try to address that first before we approve our agenda. Judy, do you?
Okay, there is an item, and I'm going to let Michael Viret, our Finance Director, explain it to you, and a copy is in front of each of you there.
So, one of the consent items, or actually a couple of the consent items, have to do with resolutions for our prospective financing. We're doing a short-term financing to be able to do like we did in the past with Trans, only with a more expedited process and everything. So, we have two items here which we're still going to act upon, which are basically to appoint Wolf Hansen and Company as investment banking and underwriting services provider and provide services for financial advisor. Those are things that we need to have in hand in order for them to be able to do work for us under requirements that are out there. But, the item that you have in front of you is that Mark Pressman, who is with Wolf Hansen, has talked with Roy Gibbons over at the county and has been able to obtain a deal for us in terms of being able to get a short-term financing. We need to act on that tonight, or have a special meeting somewhere along the way, but they want to have a resolution in hand in order to be able to do this. So, what you have is basically the end product of what the other two items is. He's here tonight, incidentally, if we want to discuss with him.
Okay, do you want that on the public hearing, regular agenda, or consent?
If you want to talk about it, then we should put it on regular agenda.
Okay.
If you're comfortable with the explanation and the paperwork that you have in front of you, you could put it in on consent.
I think since it wasn't available on the public packet and so forth, it should be on the regular agenda.
Okay.
So people can address it who, this is the first time they've heard about it.
Sure, good point. Okay, can I get a motion?
So move for the addition of an emergency item.
Okay, motion Bregman?
Second.
Second. Read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are expecting our town attorney tonight, is there? Have we heard? Okay, well, if there are items, yeah, if there are items that we get to that we feel we need him, we can push those items until he gets here. Okay, we'll move forward with this amended agenda. Meeting protocol: The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the council has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at all of the council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 p.m. to ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 p.m. will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless council votes to suspend this rule. Please, at this time, take all your cellular phones and put them either in silent mode or turn them off. We do have a couple of announcements tonight. Fairfax Food Pantry going strong Saturdays 9 to 11 at the Fairfax Community Church. At 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, volunteers are always needed. There is one vacancy on the Open Space Committee for a complete four-year term to November 2016. There's one vacancy on the Volunteer Board for a three-year term November 30th to November 30th, 2015. There's a vacancy on the Fairfax Youth Commission for Ross Valley youth between the ages of 14 and 19. There is a vacancy for a youth commissioner to serve on the Park and Recs Commission for a two-year term. And, mark your calendars, the Sustainable Crafts Fair will be held in the Pavilion again this year. I think this is the third or fourth year running. It's quite a fun event, highlighting a lot of our local arts and crafts people and skilled artisans, Saturday, December 8th, from 11 to 4. Let's move on to, are there any other announcements? Let's move on to reports and presentations. Our very first one is the Central Marin Food Energy Program Overview and Rollout. Patty Garberino and Jason Dow. Come on down.
Going to start with Jason's presentation. We'll do a little bit of a Mutt and Jeff, and you can figure out who's Mutt and who's Jeff. This has been something where we've come to you, tell them what you're going to tell them, tell them, tell them what you told them, and we've made presentations in the past. Now, we're actually, while we're setting up, I can mention that we will be making our annual application to you for our rates, and included will be an item for this project that we plan on starting probably close to late winter, spring-ish, but we would be charging the rate here just half a year, so it'll be about 1.57 increase effect on the rate. But, that's in the hands of the third-party rate regulator. As you recall, all of our rates are regulated by them, so that's just what was submitted on Monday. It's a wonderful public-private partnership. It helps us all to get to zero waste. It helps all of the jurisdictions that we serve, also with their climate action plan. This is our third I Love Dogs Dog and Pony Show. We did one in Sacramento today and one San Rafael Monday night, and we go from here to Larkspur right after we finish, so thank you for putting us on the agenda when you did. As I mentioned, our start, I won't be taking anything from the presentation, but this was four years in the making. As you recall, we had a BioCell pilot project to try to get commercial organics out of the waste stream, and then we got, or the city of San Rafael and Larkspur got a $25,000 grant from PG&E to look at renewable energy in the existing digesters that Jason had operating at CMSA. And, with that and in-kind work from us and from the city as well and from Larkspur, we developed a feasibility study that made this look really, really easy, or easy's not a good word, simple and doable. Part of what the Sacramento presentation was, was with other jurisdictions who are spending millions of dollars on this, and you kind of, I don't want to really say this, but you keep waiting for the other shoe to drop. Why is ours so easy and simple? And a lot of that is because of the public-private partnership. It should represent, just to refresh from our tree, about a 3% diversion increase. We're already approaching about that 80% mark, so this really is significant and helps, again, with the climate action plans. So, Jason, did you have any other stories to tell before we get started?
I have lots of stories.
Yeah, okay. Happy to take any questions before we get the PowerPoint up and running as well.
And just to be, this is from commercial food waste.
Commercial food waste, perfect.
So businesses?
Businesses, it would be restaurants, cafeterias.
Exactly.
People from Aldersley and San Rafael, so group home situations where they also have communal kitchens. We'll probably start with about 2025 to begin with, to get the kinks out. San Francisco's had this program for some time. Very good program, nice people in their own right, but their Achilles' heel has been the contamination rate, so they've started and stopped and started and stopped because these digesters really can't handle much more than a 3%, 5% if that, a contamination, and theirs has been much larger than that. So, we're actually going to start with pre-consumer food waste in kitchens, which is significant, food scraps from the sous chef and so forth, and then once the restaurant with lots of outreach, and we have three outreach people here with us today, if they could put their hands up. Kim Shibley, Giovanni and Chance, Giovanni and Chance come to us from AmeriCorps and their fab. All of them rock stars, lean-forward kind of people, but it will require a lot of outreach. As you can imagine, in the back kitchens of restaurants, there's a lot of turnover, as there is with businesses. So, getting business waste out of the waste stream paper and food waste takes a great deal of effort, constantly telling them what to do. So, when they do the pre-consumer, then they get a really nice certificate, done, good job, and then they move on to post-consumer. That's where the real contamination is. So, bottom line actually is hopefully everybody's eating all their food. Hello? You know, we don't really want to have food going to waste. That's a bad thing. So, with that, I'm sure we'll have this up and running soon, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you've got the presentation before you as well, and it looks like here we go. Can we get him a handheld microphone so that we can make sure we're getting him on the record? Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks, Judy, for allowing us to come in and give a food energy, commercial food energy program update to the council. I think we were here back in 2009 when we gave you the initial presentation, and we appreciate your council passing a resolution supporting the overall concept of the program and suggesting that CMSA continue to explore it. So, it's all moved through. I can talk loud. One more time. Okay. So, this is the Central Marin Commercial Food Energy Program that started up back in early 2008 with a methane capture feasibility study, and there's been a lot of progress over the last few years, so we're here to show you what's happened.
Hold on, let's see if we can get this sound problem fixed first. Got our on-staff technical support? Try now. Oh, no.
Okay, good.
Down a little?
Think so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so you each have the handout. Here's the outline for the presentation night. First, I'll talk a little bit about, you know, this great public-private partnership that CMSA has with Marin Sanitary Service, talk, show you our service areas and the level.
Maybe we can get you at the podium and then have someone switch slides for you.
I'll switch slides for you.
Thanks, sorry about that.
Okay. Yep, I think we're ready to roll here. Then I'll give you a briefing on some of the key developments over the last few years, and we have a little cartoon that kind of gives an overview of what food energy is from the collection side to the processing side at CMSA and producing energy. Then Patty will come up and talk about some of the elements in the Marin Sanitary Service Program, from the collection to rolling it out with the food service establishments and other commercial institutions, and then I'll come back up and give you an overview of what's happening at CMSA in terms of the facilities that are being constructed right now, and that should start up in early 2013, and then we'll move into, you know, some of the permitting issues, what we foresee as high-level benefits of the program, and then some of the near-term next steps for the program. So, this really kind of summarizes what it is. It's just this commercial food waste here from restaurants and schools and possibly in the future San Quentin State Prison, and it runs through a series of processes. Those are at Marin Sanitary Services Transfer Station right down the street from CMSA, and then some process at CMSA, and the product is this biogas. And biogas is also called sludge gas, is called digester gas, but essentially what it is, is kind of a lower-quality natural gas. So, it's about 65% methane and the rest of its carbon dioxide and some trace gases in there. Tell you a little bit about our agency here. So, this is the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant located on Anderson Drive in San Rafael. There is a large pipeline that runs down Anderson Drive that brings most of San Rafael's wastewater to the plant, and there's a very large pipeline that comes through the hill here from Sir Francis Drake that brings all of San Quentin's, Corrida, San Anselmo's, Fairfax, and a lot of the unincorporated Ross Valley's wastewater to CMSA, and all of that ends up in this building here, and it just kind of rolls right on through the plant, through the different, you know, processes and treatment units, until at the end here, it's a clean secondary treated wastewater, and then enters a really large pipe that's about seven foot in diameter and goes out about two miles out into the San Francisco Bay to a deep shipping channel where it is mixed and diluted with the bay water. On this side of the plant is where all of the material that's removed from the wastewater is processed and treated. These are anaerobic digesters. That's where most of the work happens, and this fats oils and grease and food energy facility that's built right now is located right, right over here. Okay, Patty? Just a little bit about our agency. You know, we are a public agency, a joint powers authority. We serve about a little under half the county's population, pretty much everybody in Central Marin. We have 41 staff members from, you know, laboratory techs, engineers, to finance folks, to wastewater operators, mechanics, electricians, and administrative staff. The average flow that comes into our wastewater plant each day over the year is about 11 million gallons, a little less during the summer months, a little more during the winter months, and you all remember that December 31st, 2005 storm, about 100-year event, we saw the flows at the plant reach about 115 million gallons. That's a pretty significant increase from the average daily to those peak flows, and that's primarily due to the condition of the wastewater collection system, the pipes in the ground throughout Marin County and really in Central Marin here. And then all the residuals from those digesters, that's after the microbes do all the eating of the material and the processing, those are called biosolids. You know, we produce about 17 tons a day of that, and every day it's off-hauled and it's beneficially reused as either alternate daily cover at the Redwood landfill during the wet weather months and during the dry weather months. It's a fertilizer soil amendment that's used at a farm in Southern Sonoma County right off of Highway 37. We also have a regulatory arm at the agency where we regulate, you know, various businesses, dental offices, car washes, restaurants that could discharge anything into the sanitary sewer system that could impact the environment, public health, or actually our treatment processes. We lead a county-wide public education program in Marin. We have booths at EcoFest, EcoFair here, and EcoFest, and Marin County Fair, and various other farmers' markets and wetland days, things like that. Then we provide various contract services to many local agencies: Corrida, San Quentin, County of Marin, Nevada, probably next month a new contract with them. Okay. And here's a little bit about our partner in this initiative, Marin Sanitary Service. You're familiar with them. They provide great service, have a high recycling rate. They serve nine jurisdictions throughout Central Marin, cities, you know, the county, Los Glouines Valley Sanitary District is one of their franchisors, about 33,000 accounts. And this is our service area. So, within the red boundary is Marin Sanitary's area, and within the green boundary is CMSA's area, so there's a pretty good overlap. And here's some of the highlights of what's happened since 2008. First is that we completed this methane capture study, and what that was is my friend Ken Nordhoff, who was the City Manager of San Rafael, called me back in 2008 and said that PG&E is offering some grant funds for different types of projects. These projects look at reducing greenhouse gases, and they, there was a wide array of them, from, you know, capturing the methane from cow manure and doing something with it, to processing organic material in a digester. So, Ken knew that we had anaerobic digesters, so he called me up, and we queried a meeting with, you know, Larkspur staff, San Rafael staff, Patty and some of her staff, and this PG&E, and we scoped out this, this study. And essentially, it showed that Marin Sanitary could collect 15 tons of food waste a day in their service area. They could process it at their transfer station and grind it up. They could bring it down the street to us. We could process it. We could put it in our digesters. It could produce additional biogas, which is the fuel in our engine to produce electricity. Then in 2009, we gave presentations to all the city and towns and the board supervisors, got a lot of support for the project concept. We did a lot of engineering pre-design work. We figured out exactly what size of facility we needed at CMSA and where it's going to be located and what the economic payback was on that. And then in 2010, the project was integrated into a much larger project at the agency where we're doing a lot of other rehabilitation work, and we completed the CECL review. There was a mitigative negative declaration. We've been permitted, and now we have an MOU with Marin Sanitary for each of us to complete the various aspects of our programs to the rollout, and then eventually we'll have a use agreement between our agencies. So, this little cartoon here shows kind of in a nutshell what it is. You have the commercial food waste that's either the pre-consumer side from the kitchens or the post-consumer side from the restaurants, scraped off the plates, that's, it's sorted to a degree, it's put in special containers, that's picked up by Marin Sanitary, is brought to their transfer stations, where it's, there are people there on a conveyor line, and they remove contaminants such as bones, melon rinds, plastics, you know, utensils, anything, anything that could, is not digestible in the treatment plan process, or could negatively impact any of the equipment in the processing. So, that's all removed, then that's put in a truck and brought to CMSA, dumped in a tank, that's about maybe as big as this room, where it's mixed up, mixed with some, you know, sludge from that digester there to keep it nice and warm at 100 degrees so all the oils don't coagulate. Then that gets sent over to the digesters. Digestors full of a bunch of microbes, get really happy when you send the food waste in. They produce a lot of extra biogas. We pull that off the top of the digester. It goes through various treatment and purification processes to remove contaminants, and that is pumped, well, you know, use a compressor to push it into our existing engine generator, and we produce additional electricity that powers our, our agency. Then those residuals are called biosolids, and that's where we use ADC or soil amendment. Okay, Patty? Now Patty will tell you about what they're doing at Marin Sanitary Service.
Okay, as you can see here, this is a state figure, but food is the largest single source of waste in California. It's 16% of the commercial waste stream, 25% of the residential food waste stream, residential waste stream. And as you recall, a couple of years ago, we started the food waste into the green can in the residential arena, and that's going very well, and has very little ick factor. Less than 1% of customers called initially saying, "Ugh, I can't stand putting this stuff in here," and now it's even less. Obviously, our primary goal is to divert material from the landfill and create energy from it. Feasibility study available to anyone who would like to have a copy of it and this presentation as well. The, all of this has been based on a waste characterization study that was performed by Cal Recovery for us that showed, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, two of the major groups after we did the waste characterization study, when we determined as a community that we all wanted to get to zero waste were paper in the small business arena and organics. So, we devised these programs, especially since AB 341 was coming down, mandatory commercial recycling, and this program, this partnership. We have about 247 different points of food source when we did this study. Now, the economic downturn has taken out about 10% of those, but they include restaurants, delis, grocery stores, and cafeterias, schools, and facilities that, like the Tamil pious and so forth. Mill Valley Refuge Service has expressed an interest in this program. As a matter of fact, when we spoke today, we got contact from the Cow Palace, and they're interested in joining the program too, which seems like a bit of a schlep, but we do have available capacity, but people should be eating their food, not wasting it. Again, the amount of food waste that we've got is 10 to 15 tons per day that we hope to divert. This is our timeline. It's fascinating. We could probably move on to the next slide. And, this is a little bit of a schematic that shows exactly how the material will work. The good news is, we anticipate hiring people to do the sorting and also helping us with the driving. As Jason mentioned, this will be collected into a bunker. They'll be sorting to make sure that we get it as clean as we possibly can. We live in a wonderful community, like with our curbside recycling program where we have very low contamination. It's 0.97%, which is unheard of. We're hoping to have the same ring true with the ethic that we've got here in Marin County. Mill Valley Refuge Service I mentioned. Then we make it kind of into an oatmeal, so it's, it's prepared for Jason's facility, and it's less than one inch minus in particles. One of the beauties of this too is that we're only half a mile apart, so our carbon footprint that we've had audited will remain small. San Francisco, nice people, but they're going from San Francisco's transfer station to Vacaville, and then they come back to Emeryville, so we're hoping to have obviously far less windshield time, we call it. This is a diagram of what will happen inside the transfer station, fully permitted. We've had meetings with the LEA, as I mentioned, and with the Waste Board, former Waste Board Cal Rec cycles now, and they're all happy with the facility. We had an existing permit, and this has been an amendment to that existing permit. Permit discussion is so fascinating. So, this is a side view of what the diagram looks like as well, and these are great people. They do this all over the world. They're from West Salem in Oregon, Salem, Oregon, that did this facility, so. One of the nice things is that the costs have continued to come down, which is a total shocker, right? As we learn from other facilities around the world, it gets even more simple, so that's a good thing, too.
Okay, so here's a diagram similar to what happened at Patty's station, but this is what we're planning, we planned to construct at the agency and then we have constructed. So essentially, you know, after that material is sorted and screened and ground up at the transfer station down the street, Marin Sanitary will transport that to CMSA. It'll get dumped into a large tank. That's where the sludge is injected in that tank. We keep it well-mixed. And then there's various equipment that that material runs through, and finally goes through a special piece of equipment called paddle finisher, and I have a picture of that, and the product out of the paddle finisher kind of looks like a mush, and then that's pumped over to our digesters for digestion. This is a picture of the constructed facility a few weeks ago. So, the truck will back into here. Here's the hatches. It dumps the material inside this tank. This will also receive fats oils and grease from restaurant grease traps and like shopping mall interceptors. Private haulers can bring that material to CMSA, and they come over here and they could pump it into that tank. That's co-mingled with the food waste. Then we have some odor control systems on the tank so emissions don't come off and bother the businesses around the agency. Then on this side is all of the processing equipment, you know, pumps and valves and screens and various other things. And this is the paddle finisher. This is the key piece of equipment, and this right here is about $100,000. And all that co-mingled material in that tank comes up through this green pipe, is injected into this machine, and imagine it's like a Coke can on the side that's spinning, and the material comes inside of it, and it's under pressure, and it gets extruded out through holes in the top of that can. So, all of the plastics, larger pieces, fibers, hair, things like that get removed, and they come out of a chute here, and they end up in a dumpster where that gets picked up and taken to landfill. Everything that extrudes through those little holes is that mush-like material. That gets put in another tank, and then we have pumps that'll send that right over to the digester. And this is one of our two digesters. He's about, this is about 80 feet in diameter, about a 35-foot-high wall, and this is the, one of the new membrane covers on the top. And there's like a little cover inside that expands and contracts as the gas is building up. Gas, gas volume reduces as we're using the engine, then the microbes eat more food and they produce more gas, so it's always changing. Then this outer cover stays the same shape. Okay, Patty? And this just is a diagram here that shows the capacity in the digesters. What's nice about the agency is we have two digesters. They were designed and constructed back in the early 80s, paid for with public funds, and there's a lot of unused capacity there. So, right now, just processing the wastewater solids, we're only utilizing 27% of the capacity of those digesters. This facility we built, it can receive, you know, 10,000 gallons of fog. It can receive, you know, 50 tons of food waste or combinations of the both, but we're showing it as receiving 5,000 gallons of fog, 20 tons of food waste here, and with that, we're only reaching 54% of the capacity of the digesters, and that is at the average energy demand of the plant. So, if we receive that much material, we'll be energy self-sufficient at CMSA, not buying any electricity from Marin Clean Energy, not buying any natural gas as a fuel in that generator. The way we designed this facility is that it can be expanded in the future, so if other haulers are interested, we can go through a process and construction, expand it, and we can get up to this level, which is the capacity of our generation system. So, between this line and this line, we could actually export that energy out of the agency and sell it to PG&E, Marin Clean Energy, or others. And then we will still have a lot of extra capacity in the digesters. So, the bottom line with that is that we don't have to So the bottom line with that is that we don't have to spend any money to build any digesters. Okay Patty? And this is a photo of the biosolids that have been dewatered, that's the residual product from the digestion process.
This is what I'm supposed to tell you, really, do you need to take a tour, or are you thinking about it?
We have little, we have little bags of that we can send you home with. So, uh, so, so, our agency started up operation in 1985, and it was designed with the digesters and the biogas purification system and the big engine generator. And only about 25% of the wastewater agencies in the United States have, you know, a generation system to utilize energy in that biogas. So right now, just on the wastewater treatment side, we produce anywhere from nine to 12 hours of our own electricity a day. Then the remaining time during the day, we buy natural gas to use as a fuel in that engine generator to produce the rest of our electricity. As we receive fat oils and grease and food waste, you know, just more bio, more biogas, less use of a natural gas to the point where we could hopefully at some point be energy self-sufficient and export energy. Okay Patty? This is a picture of the generator. It's an engine, just like the one in your car, except it's very big and has 16 cylinders, and it just uses the gases as a fuel source, and this is the actual generator here that's attached to the engine. Okay? And then in terms of permitting, a lot of information here, but essentially that both CMSA and Marin Sanitary have been permitted by the local enforcement agency of Cal Recycle for the project. And these are some of the benefits that we've identified for the project. One is, it is a local renewable energy source under the biomass category, which is great news. As we've talked about a few times, that we will increase our energy self-sufficiency at the agency, which then will reduce our operating costs because we'll have to procure the natural gas and as much electricity. That, in one of the pre-design engineering reports, there's some calculations done that looked at, if you take, say, this 15 tons of food waste and you put it in the digesters and then you get the gas and use it as a fuel in the engine, you know, the engine releases carbon dioxide, that has some greenhouse gas equivalent to it. If you take that same volume of food waste and you put it in the landfill, it's going to degrade there, and you're going to have methane released and nitrous oxide and other things. The greenhouse gas reduction from digesting it versus landfilling it for 15 tons a day is about 2,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas reduction, and that has value to it also on the market. Then of course, we're reducing, you know, the amount of organics moving to landfill, which is good, it aligns with some of the new Cal Recycle, you know, proposed regulations on increased diversions. And our colleagues over at East Bay Mud have the, I think, the only operating facility in the United States that receives all kinds of organic material, and we've kind of designed our facility based on their facility design, and we've learned, you know, a lot from their lessons that they've learned. And what they reported, that 10 tons of food waste can power up to 140 homes a year. And this kind of shows you the greenhouse gas comparison or in carbon dioxide equivalents. So when we receive the food waste and we digest it and use it as fuel, about a unit of one, if you take that same amount of food waste and you aerobically compost it, you have eight times as much greenhouse gas emissions. And if you take that same amount and you dispose it in landfill, like the Redwood landfill where they have a methane capture system there, and you see them flaring it, in the future they'll generate electricity, you have 12 times as much. Then a bar that's not here is a landfill that doesn't have the methane capture, that's probably 20 times as much. So this project has that type of an environmental benefit also. So here's some of the, the next steps, you know, the construction's almost done, so by the end of the year, we should be ready for operation, we have to train our staff, we have to develop some standard operating procedures to comply with some requirements in our regional water board permit, we have to finalize the use agreement between Marin Sanitary and CMSA. Marin Sanitary should have their improvements to their transfer station wrapped up, you know, sometime during the winter, that's buying the equipment from West Salem that Patty talked about, having it installed and getting the permitting from C.S. San Rafael. And then there's some training for the transfer station staff on how to receive the food waste and process it and sort it. And then there's the outreach to all of the food service establishments within the service area and training their kitchen staff. And that's the update.
Thank you very much, it's exciting. I know we've been talking about this project for many years, and it is, it is key to that zero waste goal that we're all working really hard to get to, so it's exciting and I appreciate that you guys have found a way to work together and, and make it happen, and hopefully the ding to the, to the ratepayer won't be, won't be bad and the benefit to us all will be extraordinary. Questions from council members? Anything, are there any que, are?
I was just, you know, I'm on MEA board, and we've got a couple contracts with methane fields, and so it seems to me it would be a real good partnership to get together with MEA and have a local facility right in San Rafael. And the other thing that I was thinking about is the efficiency to Marin Sanitary, because you're going to reduce your trips to Redwood and elsewhere, transportation, tipping fees, everything. So it really does, the efficiencies sort of go down the whole line, which is really nice.
There's a variety of arenas, not only the tip fee, but our partners' footprint, our fuel consumption.
Yeah, it's like, it's like what Paul Hawkins say, it's like green capitalism, because the, the efficiencies actually are, should reduce costs, which is pretty cool.
Ryan?
Um, there's so much of this that's fantastic, it should be noted, and I know you guys do a great job, and there's a lot of thought behind this too. I did have a couple questions, well, I could repeat all the benefits that I think to the project, but they're all here listed, and I know, I want to let you know that I think that's fantastic. But I do have a business down there in the area, and I notice from time to time odor issues. And sometimes when I think the project is so good and I think it makes so much sense, are there any other concerns other people have brought up to you that maybe we aren't aware of? Just to kind of, I mean, if 98% of it is fantastic, what is the 2%? Are there any problems with the digesters? Are there any issues? Is there anything here that, that could be a problem that I'm sure you've gone to this much extent that we haven't thought about or haven't been exposed to?
Me awake at night is the contamination and being, having loads rejected by Jason, you know, I want to make sure that we do a good job. So that's where the outreach comes in, and he's got the paddle finisher, which was a hundred thousand plus investment to make sure that anything that we miss, which we shouldn't. So we have to have a contingency plan, if something is too contaminated, we had talked, you mentioned San Quentin, some extent that would be great, it's the most contaminated waste there is though. So, those are the bumps in the road, but I know my colleagues in the industry, odor is an issue with the garbage companies, so I've always said I've considered myself lucky because I'm right down the street from a sewer treatment plant.
It's well, well said. And, and guys, I didn't want you to think that I'm, I really, I really love this, but sometimes, you know, it's better to hear what the concerns might be before they even possibly come up, because when you hear so, so much of what you think is a great report, it's nice to have a little something that we might want to look out for or work for.
To prepare for.
Yeah, but just to balance the whole equation. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
Just, just a comment on the odor question that you had, you know, at the wastewater plant, there are various odors that emanate at various times, and one of the major odor sources of the plant is by the digesters, and you could probably smell it when you're coming down Anderson, Anderson Drive or Sir Francis Drake. And we do have a project to replace two open tanks over there that generate a lot of the odors with a piece of equipment that's contained, so those should be minimized in that area over time.
Do these digesters in this process create any air pollution issues?
No, the digesters are covered, so all, all the biogas is contained within the digester itself, and it's pulled out through some piping and it runs through various treatment equipment before it goes to the engine.
Anything else from council? Anybody from the public who has questions or comments? Come on down.
Is that on now? Yeah. Hi, I'm Cindy Ross, and I just had a quick question. I, this, like Mr. O'Neill said, this sounds 98% or to me even 99% great, but I am just wondering if there are any estimates of, you know, what the cost will be passed on ultimately to individual ratepayers and households.
I think Patty mentioned that in the very beginning. Go ahead.
We have handouts as well for the public. As with the commercial food waste to energy, because remember, the 30,000-foot goals are getting to zero waste and climate action plans. So, this program aids in both of those goals. We had about an 8.5% increase for the residential food waste into the green waste cart to make sure that that material was not going off to the landfill. That spread across all of our service area because it benefited everyone for those two goals, zero waste and the climate action plans. This looks to be, right now, about a three annually, about a 3.14% increase, and it will be spread amongst all of the ratepayers again, residential and commercial, even though seemingly it's a commercial program. But, it makes a balance with the residential program, and if you think about it, the slide that Jason showed with the same footprint, Jason will not be needing to buy energy to supply your sewer treatment plant, so there will be an offset for the same ratepayers. It's not the same company, same agency, but it's the same ratepayers. So we're hoping that there'll be a savings from that. Our tip fee at Redwood landfill is $50 a ton, and this is 20. Now we have an infrastructure and processing that takes place as well, but we're doing our very best to keep those costs down.
Thank you. Mark, had a, oh, go ahead.
I gotta add something to that cost question. So the facility that's constructed at CMSA has pretty much been paid for, and we don't, you know, we're not going to add any staff to run the facility, so our operational costs won't increase and no capital costs. As Patty mentioned, if you look at a particular, say, property owner in Fairfax, they'll have a 3% increase on the solid waste side, but as we get, receive more fog from the private haulers and the food waste, CMSA will have a tipping fee coming in, we'll have a savings on the expense side from natural gas, and we did some rough back-of-the-envelope calculations a couple years ago, assuming what, you know, the rates were going to be, and it looked like it could possibly at some point in the future be a wash to an average property owner, because they save on one end but a little increase on the other end.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Bell, 63 Domingo. Just a clarification, you were saying that you separate bones out at the plant, so should we or should we not be putting bones in, like shells of shellfish, et cetera, in the green can?
You can't. Yes, this is, the residential, what we're putting in our green cans is residential, this is the commercial food waste.
Tony Udis, 74, is Terris, Fairfax. I had a question on the potential future in your generation of energy or whatever, the emissions that would be given off with the diesel or whatever the machines were that you would be using. In the future, I mean, do you look to be expanding that, and what would the impact be on the environment and the community around it with more emissions?
Good question, thank you. The, the existing generator is there and runs 24/7, so it has a certain emissions profile all the time. That emissions profile meets, you know, very stringent requirements in our permit with the Bay Area Quality Management District. It would be, it would be a long time from now when we were energy self-sufficient and we were exporting energy and maxing out the output to the existing generator, to where we would have to purchase another type of a generation system at the agency. And if we get to that point in the future, we would look at, you know, an array of different types of generation systems, you know, internal combustion engines, which do have, you know, more CO2 outputs and other things, you know, fuel cells, they can run on biogas, and even micro turbines can run on biogas with very, with no or very little emissions, but that's in the future. If we get to that point, we'll do some studies and we'll look at which is the best alternative to minimize the impact to the environment.
Thank you.
Actually, to follow up on what you just said.
Will you please identify yourself for the record?
Sorry, Michael McIntosh. To follow up what you just said earlier, I was curious if there was a study to look at the cost benefit and the reduction of output by using solid oxide fuel cells, because right now, the University of Maryland is producing something that's 10% more efficient than Bloombox, they're actually providing it for the Department of Energy, and the department is very eager in extending a hand for a project like this.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close our public comment, and thank you very much for coming, I hope you can get in time to your Larkspur meeting, and we'll get back to the rest of our meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, as you probably noticed, we pushed our open time down a little bit on our, on our agenda so that these guys could get to their next meeting, we appreciate everyone's patience getting to open time, but before that happens, we're going to do something that we get to do every now and then that's really nice for us to do, which is honor a citizen in our community. Those of us who live here, which is most likely everyone in this room, understands that Fairfax doesn't, doesn't run on its own, that it takes an extraordinary amount of time and effort by a lot of active citizens, helping in a number of small and big ways. And a citizen came to me and asked if I would go, that if our council would go out of our way to honor a citizen who has done this, and that citizen is Dottie Miller, and she has been beautifying Manor Circle for many years. And so I'm going to read this proclamation, and then Dottie was not able to make it tonight, but I understand some of her neighbors are here, and I will present, thank you, I will present this to them and make sure that they, they get it to Dottie. But I'm going to go ahead and read this for her. Proclamation, recognizing Dottie Miller as an inspiring force behind the beautification of Manor Circle. Whereas Dottie Miller has put her energy and love of the community into the maintenance of Manor Circle as an asset to the neighborhood and the town, and whereas Dottie Miller has shared her knowledge and talents with her friends, family, and neighbors, and whereas the town and the neighborhood and the entire community has benefited from Dottie's dedicated and prolific gardening skills for three decades, whereas Dottie Miller is known to many as the rogue gardener. Now therefore, let it be hereby proclaimed that the town of Fairfax recognizes the hard work and dedication to the beautification of the community of Dottie Miller and the many others that she has inspired. Thank you. Please pass our thing. Thank you so much. Are there any comments from council on that one? Okay, any comments or questions from the community? Please feel free to bring these wonderful citizens forward to us, we're always happy to say wonderful, nice things about them. Moving on, open time for public expression. Each person has a three-minute time limit. If you wish to address the council, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Individuals have three minutes to speak, five minutes if you're representing a group. This is the time that is set aside for people wishing to address the council on matters that are not listed on the agenda. State law provides that the council is not permitted to take action and strictly limits the right of council to discuss any un-agendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or need to take the immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Come on. Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy Ross, and I live right on Lansdale Avenue, right near the Fairfax Plaza. And I was wondering if there's any update on the chemical situation there. I know that several weeks ago, there was a lot of activity there, there were people that were apparently, you know, sampling levels, and I've tried to find out whether it was possible to have our house evaluated and, or at least to find out what the status of their findings were, and I haven't heard anything yet, so I was just wondering if the council knows anything about that.
I have, have we gotten an update, Judy, from the folks who did the fellow test?
I haven't heard any results from them, this was the court mandated testing, and I haven't, we haven't received any results yet.
Say something, if you go to the Department of Toxic Substance Control, you, on their website, they have a dropdown, whatever it's called, calendar, and you can go to specific projects and it'll clue you in onto the status of the project. So, it doesn't change that often, the agency moves very, very slowly, but you can actually track an individual site, so I can, if you send me an email, I can actually send you that link. Okay?
Thank you. Come on up.
Right below the mic.
My name is Claudia Belchon, and I live on Shamran Court. I've lived there for 13 years, and I'm here tonight when I viewed the, the item number seven, where you awarded a bike, a contract for a bike spine to be placed on Shamran Court. And I brought, brought to the forefront of not only the issue of the bike spine, but the issue of the court in general, which is a very congested 1,200-foot-long court with approximately 13 houses scattered around it. Parking is on both sides of the street. So the, when, that if you were to propose and place a bike spine, there would be a very narrow margin for passage, cars, bikes, pedestrians, everyone that passes through there that either goes to Manor School or up to the Lefty Gomez Field. It's created a parking problem, also a safety hazard, as kids and animals and residents are constantly darting up and in and out of the street because there's no option, there's no sidewalk. And so what I'd like to do, I, we've, some of the residents have written some letters and emailed some letters to the city council, and I would like you to reconsider, even though you're far along in the project and have awarded this contract of $96,000 to this company to bike spine this little tiny court, I would like you to take consideration, into consideration, the safety of the children that attend the school and also people that come from San Anselmo to go to the soccer games in, in the Gomez Field, baseball, and on and on and on. So I'd like you to reconsider and perhaps look at that. It may be too late, but I really feel that I have to do a voice, and maybe there's some problems also with residents, that they have personally problems with parking. They cannot park. The people that come into Fairfax that don't live there often park in the middle of the street or block driveways, and so there's a frustration level, not only for the safety of everybody that passes through Shamran Court, but every, and, but also just trying to negotiate this little tiny, tiny street. It's always, in 13 years, it's always been crowded. It's always been no place to park, and it hasn't gotten any better. And another question that I wanna broach the council on is that there was a proposal to do a bike path along Sir Francis Drake, and I was wondering what happened to that. And that's it.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Shoup, and I live at 17 Shamran Court. Now, as far as I know, the people that live on our street haven't been notified about this bike spine. Also, I don't think that we've been involved in it at all. It is a big problem because there are no sidewalks, and there's seven houses on the circle, and so seven driveways, and out of the seven houses, six of us are 60 or older. And the other night, when I was coming home from work, I was pulling into my driveway, and it was already dark, and there were people coming out of the, the footpath, which is an easement to Lefty Gomez Field. Well, nobody knew about that easement, or, you know, maybe a few local people knew, but this summer, when White Hill School had the construction and the soccer camps were going on, everybody was coming down our street, and I think, I don't know, luckily for me or luckily for everybody else, I wasn't around all summer because I go out and tell people, you know, slow down, you're driving too fast. They drive pretty fast down our street, and everybody that lives on the block, it's, I know, I know all my neighbors, and we drive about five miles an hour down the street because we know that there's kids in the neighborhood playing, and they park in front of the easement, they park in front of my driveway if I can get, and I don't like to do this, but if I can get in the house fast enough, I call the police. The other day, somebody was parked in my neighbor's driveway, and I went over and I said, you know, you really shouldn't park there because you're parking in their driveway. And he said, well, I'm only gonna be a half hour. It's really, it's really turned into a big problem with a lot more pedestrians, a lot more car traffic, and now the idea of having, I don't even know where the bicycles are gonna go down Shamran Court because the easement is for pedestrians only, and it's also private property. It's property of one of my neighbors. So I, I hope that maybe we could get together with the people that are doing this and get some input from the residents.
Thank you.
Thanks.
John, I don't know if we need to, if we wanna pull that item, John, that's really yours, so I'm gonna let you speak to that briefly and we'll continue with our public now.
I can speak to it right now. I mean, it's an open, it's, it's not supposed to be for discussion right now unless we pull that item later, but I can do some informational stuff.
We can either, we can either pull it or give...
I'll be happy to pull it or if I'm not allowed to talk now.
It's not clear to me how it's related to item seven, but if it is related to item seven, you may as well pull it and talk about it all at once, but if it's not related, then you could just give a response and move on to the consent agenda.
Well, yeah, it's the awarding of the contract, so it's somewhat related in that it's the bike spine. I mean, the, the parking issue is not at all related to the bike spine. I can talk about some of the history with, the bike spine was originally intended to load to the sidewalk that continues to the path along Lefty Gomez, and when this was brought in front of the Homeowners Association this summer, that appeared to be the case. I mean, the school was building that, and, and it was all that, you know, that was basically the plan at that point. Then our traffic engineer looked at the capacity of that pathway and sidewalk and said, in his opinion, that the sidewalk wasn't big enough to carry the expected volume of kids, and, you know, since that easement was there, probably anybody looking at it would say, well, you know, kids are gonna vote with their feet and also use that easement in Shamran Court, which unfortunately, that happened after your homeowners' meeting. So that didn't come up at that meeting. But, you know, I, I've been in conversation with a couple of people in, on the homeowners' group, and, you know, advised them that that's the case, and took information from them back to the traffic engineer, and he's agreed not to mark the pavement going in onto Shamran, and basically to keep as much traffic going onto the sidewalk along Drake as possible. I'm also gonna be in a meeting tomorrow morning with the, the Maintenance Superintendent of Ross Valley School District, and I'm gonna bring this up with him also, you know, in terms of the capacity of that path there, and I don't know how much, I mean, he, he needs to be aware of what's going on, too, so. I can't make any promises from the school district, I mean, that's a hard one to get. But in terms of the traffic there, that's not related to the spine, and I guess a question related to that is, is what kind of parking enforcement can happen on that street? I mean, it's, it's, it's the same as any other city street rather, even though it's a parking, I mean, a housing development, right? So I guess, you know, that means that, you know, people shouldn't be parking in driveways. I mean, speed things happen, but we can't say it's local traffic only or something like that, unfortunately. That's the impression. You're shaking your head just a little bit, so.
I just thought you wanted silent answers. No, it's a, it's a, it's a public street, so we can't restrict it to local traffic. If there's parking issues, we do what we always do. If we see it, we, we address it, but most of the time, for the, the issue she's describing, where someone will park in front of the easement or, not necessarily the easement, but the driveways, we don't know if it's a resident or not, and even though it's technically illegal to park in front of a driveway, you can block your own driveway. It's spirit of the law, letter of the law. So we don't just randomly go write tickets for people in front of driveways because it could be a guest, it could be a resident. So for that, for that, those residents would have to call us because we're not gonna enforce a driveway violation unless we get a call.
But there is that remedy of having a complaint base.
Absolutely, and we'll come out and we'll take care of the car. If we can't find the owner, we'll tow it.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on at that school right now with all the construction, as I'm sure everybody's aware, and that's projected, unfortunately, last through next summer, so, you know, that affects that heavily-used field and everything. There's only so much space, so. I wish I had better news than that.
Ryan?
It just sounds to me like the ideal spot to put a sign to say, caution, children, do not block driveways. I mean, put some common sense notation out in the front. There's only one way in, everybody's gotta see it, and I feel for the people who drop kids off and aren't familiar with their neighborhood. It would drive you crazy, and no one knows your street, ma'am, is better, better than you do, but it just sounds like the situation is, kids will play, and they gotta get there, and we have to inform the people that are bringing kids through thoroughfares that there are safety concerns that these people want.
A diamond sign that says, don't enter Shamran to, Shamran to drop off your kids. I mean, there's a place to drop off out by Drake.
I don't know, I think, I don't know if you can say that. I think that you might have to just word it around, be extremely careful, children to play, do not block driveways, something to that effect, and that's, sounds like those are the concerns.
Okay. I'm gonna move on and finish our open, our open time.
Hi, I'm Lanesbragg at Bell Avenue in Fairfax. Back before Michael Rock left, several months before that, our neighborhood had a meeting. About 20 people came out, and we were, we were discussing traffic around our neighborhood, which is east of the Good Earth, and we talked about having meetings with a traffic expert, and Michael Rock promised us all these things, and now he's gone and nothing has been said. And, you know, work has been proceeding with the sidewalk and whatnot in the area, and no input from us, and no traffic expert. I'm just wondering if something could be done about that and some follow-through could be had. I think, David, you were at that meeting, weren't you? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe David and Judy can meet and see what, what promises were made, and if there are outstanding ones, do some follow-up on it.
We'll take care of it, Lain.
Thank you. Any other public time, open expression on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public expression time and move on to interviews and appointments. Our first one is to the Open Space Committee for a full four-year term. Judy, you wanna tee this up?
Yes, we have an applicant, and I believe she's here, and we've been advertising this for a while, and I'm delighted that someone has moved forward, and as you can see, she has a lot to offer the committee, so. There we go. I hope she's here.
Is Linda Fortell here? No.
Not yet.
Yeah.
She said she would be here, so.
Is there somebody from the open? Mimi. Come tell us about Linda.
Hi, I'm Mimi Newton, 139 Mono, Chair of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, and Linda has come to two of our meetings? One of our meetings. I didn't make the other one. And was very enthusiastic, and we really liked having her there, and we were totally in support of her appointment. I think I know pretty much as much about her as is in her application, so I guess I'll just refer you guys to that.
Any questions or comments from council members?
Well, usually, we do like to vet our candidates with the heavy touch that we're, that we're known for. But in this case, and with Mimi having shown that the applicant actually has demonstrated interest by remarkably showing up at meetings for which they don't have to go, I would take a leap of faith here and ask that the council appoint Ms. Fortell to the, to the gig.
Okay. Ryan, did you want to?
No, I, as a founding member of that, I'm really happy to see that the torch is being passed, and it's really a great committee to be on, and that there's no more self-fulfilling time better spent than trying to acquire open space for future generations, so I'll make a motion if it's ready.
Let's see if there's any other comments or questions from the public before we move on to a motion. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Havit?
I'd like to make a motion to have Linda Fortell be appointed to the Open Space Committee for a full four-year term to November 30th, 2016.
Motion, O'Neill, second winds off. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Please welcome her for us. Thank you. And item, we are on our council reports and comments. Ryan, why don't we start with you?
I'll skip most of my nonVeryExciting reports in, in regard to tree committee, Ross Valley Schools, Major Crimes Task Force Oversight Committee, which I'm the alternate, but I do sit in on the meetings, did have a meeting, nothing necessarily to report yet, but there's some information that will come out to all the towns, perhaps at MCCMC or a briefing that'll come out for all councils to take a quick look at. But I did want to report on a comment in regard to Halloween. I think this might be appropriate time to give you guys a little feedback of how Halloween went. As many of you know, we did close down the full length of Domingo Street for children to have a safe environment for non-motorized traffic, and it was fabulous. And I have a three-year-old and a, and a six-year-old, so those are prime ages for this event, and the rain had no hold on Ms. Dracula and the pirate. My three-year-old actually wore a parrot on her shoulder, and the rain got the parrot a little wet, but it was, it was fantastic event, and the community really did come out and support this, much bigger than many people know. The idea of having a candy or treat drop at the town hall where Judy put a box out in front, I went to pick it up. I wasn't able to really lock down the right neighbor to leave it all with, and I thought at the end of the day, it'd be hard for someone to leave their house and run to get more if they needed it. So I turned into Santeween, and I dressed up as a baseball umpire, and I had 120 pounds worth of candy in this bag, and I literally was very eager to get it out door-to-door, and I went, so my girls would trick-or-treat in their little group, and then I'd slam this giant bag down on the doorstep, and they'd look at me like, this is the best trick-or-treater in the history of mankind. And then I'd take two big bags of candy out of the bag and put it in their box, and, and it was very well-received, and that, I made sure not to tell them that this was for me, that this was from us, and not just the council but their community, because the community really did step up. I'd like to thank Principal Richardson at Manor, who put a notation in on this in his weekly briefing to the community, and it's just a huge outpouring of where children go on this event, and the parents, it was great. And the rain didn't deter too much. I got a lot of praise that we were able to shut down the street where they didn't have to file for a special permit. I'd like to hear from the chief on what he thinks of how the night went, but from the feedback I got from all the people, it was fantastic, and I hope we consider doing that as an annual event based on the feedback I got. Chief?
Went well from our perspective, as I thought it would. The parade as well as Domingo, no issues in town at all. So it was a good night, even with the rain, and you're right, they stayed out. It was a lot. Even the officers, they got wet, too.
Thank you both. Larry?
The only official business I did was attending Marin Energy Authority, which relates to this whole gas generation project we just watched. One of the issues that came up there is, are, the cost of getting green energy from Marin Energy Authority is actually lower than PG&E's generation costs, but we are stuck charging our customers what's called a PCIA charge, which is sort of like a stranded assets charge, if you're familiar with that. It basically is compensating the incumbent utility for expenses that they claim they incurred by not having Marin Energy customers. They're claiming that they've, they've put out money, they've made financial commitments, and now they're no longer getting that money to pay those financial commitments. Well, it, it turns out that PG&E actually, in spite of all of its problems, has had a banner year and is actually selling more electricity. It's had a 10% increase, not just in profits, but in actual amounts of electricity that it's selling. So the bottom line is that we think that this piece... it's selling. So the bottom line is that we think that this PCIA charge is vulnerable to a challenge before the California Public Utilities Commission. And I think that we will be, hopefully, we will be pursuing that. If that's successful, our Marin Energy costs will be not only competitive with the incumbent utility, but may actually be less with 50% clean energy, no greenhouse gas. So very, very interesting things may be happening coming out of that. And that's it.
Thank you. John?
Okay. Bunch of different meetings and things. We had a very good turnout in Chipper Day. We had two Chipper Days on the two Sundays. And basically, it was a different arrangement this year than having tree chippers go around all the different streets. It was because in our new garbage contract, we've negotiated a certain amount every month to come back from that to help pay for Chipper Day. And so what we tried this year was having a drop-off spot at the Pavilion Lot, and that happened on two consecutive Sundays. And we're looking at, to do it more often next year, probably not during the rainy season, but next summer. And it was very successful. I mean, there was a lot of wood chips produced and basic fire hazard fuel taken out of, of, of the hills. So, and it applies for all town, unlike the, the grant of a couple of years ago, where it was three specific neighborhoods that were the most fire-prone. So that was a good thing. I attended a General Plan Implementation Committee meeting that was in here, where we had a pretty good presentation by a group called Resilient Neighborhoods. And they may well be coming and making a presentation at this meeting in the next few months. It's basically the low-carbon diet thing, is where households can reduce their carbon footprint by 20, 30%, really depending on their own actions. And it's kind of modeled on Weight Watchers in a way, and just different actions you can take to lower your carbon footprint. And basically, it's a way to get a handle on, on greenhouse gases and global warming, things that you can do. Been doing some stuff with the Fairbuck. There's going to be new set of Friday, Fairbuck Friday specials coming out. And there's been a couple of community service things which were good. One was a creek cleanup, which turned into taking care of trees along the creek to make sure they're healthy and not going to fall on the creek and cause a flood problem. And also, one of the trails out in the Deer Park neighborhood, got a fixed-up bridge and some tree trail markers on it, too, last weekend. And I helped participate in that a little bit. But that's what I got.
David?
Yeah, a couple of interesting meetings. Sitting on the CAM board, we had a, we had a presentation of the, on the LIHEP program, which is a federal program. The acronym stands for the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program. A rather generous federal program that provides the opportunity for folks to have, in different ranges of income, the opportunity to have an offset against their, their PG&E or MEA bill. I'd want to just bring it up so that it's memorialized, and if people are watching in, or when Judy provides our minutes, if folks read them, the opportunity to take advantage of a very good federal program that's run out of Community Action Marin. In addition, a couple of MCCMC programs, the Ledge Committee, obviously a little quiet now that we're in that interregnum period before the new folks get back in the end of this year, the beginning of, of next year with new legislation. I also attended the monthly dinner. And it was fascinating, because I had to go all the way to Sausalito to hear Don Carney, our fabulous Fairfax resident who runs the Marin County YMCA Youth Court. And an extraordinarily important program. And after he was done, we chatted a bit, and I recommended that he come in here and share with us the program and how it's operating. And of course, he agreed to do so, so let's tee that up for some time, the first half of next year. I also attended the program that was held for a couple of hours on Saturday morning, that San and Selmo hosted with regard to the Memorial Park Potential Detention Facility. The conversation afterwards turned to the fact that we want to sort of motivate the school district to bring them into the program as well. And Mayor McInerney is going to reach out to Councilmember Lopen, and I said I would discuss it with you, John, and that I think we'll be seeing the county bringing all of us in to, to have a conversation. And I think we can fit this in under the Brown Act. And finally, both you and I attended the Fire Board meeting this past month.
I had a couple myself. Monthly sort of mayor meets the council, or the Chamber of Commerce representatives. I also had a nice opportunity to speak at the Northern California Transition Conference. And my topic of speaking was how citizens can make resolutions and ordinances happen. So that was sort of a nice, a nice opportunity. I also met with some zero-waste folks who are part of a grant that, that comes from tipping fees and goes through our town and into, goes into zero-waste education in the community. And we've been having some internal meetings on hiring ourselves a new manager, which hopefully it will be in the works soon. And I know Judy's going to give us an update on as well, which you can do right now.
I guess the most exciting thing that's going on right now is receiving applications for a new town manager. And the committee's been meeting, and we're going to be interviewing four applicants on the 16th with the, hopefully to present finalists to the whole council. And if by some chance, none of the people are what, what we're looking for, we would broaden the search and make it a little wider. As you remember, we decided to do a more localized, smaller outreach. And I think we've been successful in getting people who are already in the community. So that's exciting, moving along with that. The other thing I think that's exciting is we're going to be planting some new trees down at the Pastory Sidewalk Project. The landscape architect sent a kind of a rendition of it, and we've posted that down there. But she wasn't able to send that to me electronically, so I wasn't able to share that with you directly. But where there were seven trees, there will now be 10 trees, and it's a tree called the Idaho Locust, which doesn't sound like, you know, the right kind of tree. But I'm assured that it's a beautiful tree, and that it'll be a wonderful improvement down there. It's a deciduous tree. So we're excited to see how that's going to look soon. And the plans are coming together, so they have those ready now. So we should be planting soon. Those are the highlights.
I meant to mention this during my opportunity, but Judy brings it up. When we were meeting at eight o'clock in the morning for a couple of mornings to discuss the Pastory project, Ray Moritz raised an issue that I think certainly came as a surprise to me. He noted that the trees that were there might not have been when they were planted 20 years ago, or 25 years ago, might not have been of the highest quality. And he struck a nerve when he suggested that, that perhaps we should take a look at the tree plantings that were done on Center. And never having thought about it before, but now staring at those trees, I realize they're 10 years in, and frankly, don't look like they've had 10 years of maximum growth. So I was interested in the council's thoughts and perhaps asking staff to take a look at the, how the health of the trees, some of the trees are doing on Center, perhaps bring in an Aurburst, and report back to us when staff allow, time allows, so we can get sort of a take on how are these trees doing? Do we have to nurture them a little bit better and give them a little TLC that certainly the ones on Pastory did not have?
Does that seem reasonable, Judy?
Well, you know, Ray has done a, he did a, a survey of all the town trees at a point, I can't remember how many years ago that is now, four or five, maybe? He did a, and recently, we had a branch fall on a car at the parcade, and he looked at some of those trees. But I don't think the trees David's referring to were in any of those surveys. So it might, you know, might be.
Well, my fear is that, you know, 15 years on, some council members will be sitting here going, "What were those knuckleheads thinking back all those years? They should have done a better job attending to those trees so that they don't suffer the same sort of root problems that the ones on Pastory did."
Yeah, after that meeting, actually, I am, I'm definitely an amateur, you know. But Ray's description, for people don't, don't know what he's talking about, when these trees came from the nursery, they were in, I don't know, two-gallon tubs or something. They were really small. The roots were going around and around like this. And to put it in late person's terms, which I can understand. And the person planting them just dug a hole about that size and plunked the tree, you know, roots and all just in the hole, and then filled in with dirt around the outside. And those roots that are going around and around are called girdling roots, because they all get a lot fatter, and then they strangle the root crown of the tree, which basically means that as the tree grows, it gets more and more strangled by its own roots. And what somebody should be doing, and, you know, you can use this on your own plants at home, is, you know, untangle the roots and spread them out and point them out going in the right directions. So that did not happen. So on any of these trees along, along the Pastory sidewalk that just came out last week. So I was riding my bike along the other trees that were also talked about that you just mentioned, David. And you could see that on several of them, that is the case, that there's a couple of roots going around. But on several others, it's not the case. So who knows whether they were all planted at the same time or not, but it's something to be aware of. And it could be that that situation is happening underground, or maybe it's just particular to those. You know, I saw it on two of the dozen or so trees along the, the, along Center Boulevard there.
So do you think it's a good idea that town, as time and staff levels allow, that they take a look at this?
Well, what are you going to do? They're planted 20 years ago, so. I mean, it's good to be aware of.
No, they were planted 10 years ago. The problem is that if we don't address it now, five other folks will be sitting up here, new staff, and they'll be dealing with it. So let's sort of get to the bottom of it before we get 25 years in and we look at the trees and say, "My heavens, those are sort of squashed."
Can I interrupt? There's another problem. This is not on the agenda.
I was just going to say.
You could either ask staff to look into it, or you could agenda.
Okay, I asked staff to look into it.
Don't, don't have a landscape contract. There's a landscaper there every week that's tending.
Those trees are not 10 years old. You plant against trees, it's about 2005, they're about seven years old. So, you know, before we go too far into the weeds on them.
Okay, just to clarify, the trees from five years ago were not the ones in question. They are the older ones that are sprouting out of the asphalt and, you know, that were, that were planted much longer, so.
Is that all for your manager report?
Yes.
Thank you, Judy. All right, let's move to our consent calendar. What time is it? Do I have a motion to approve our consent calendar as is?
Did we want to pull the bike spine?
Is there interest in the audience for pulling this bike spine, talking about it further? This is the awarding of the contract for the bike spine. Did you have your questions answered?
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, pretty much.
That was the objective, but, yeah.
I think so. We're going to look at, but actually, the bike spine isn't going to put it on the camera. It's going to be looked at. We're going to try to put it on there.
Yeah, right now, the bike spine is effectively split, just because the traffic engineer doesn't feel that, that sidewalk has enough capacity to hold everything. But we're going to try to keep kids going that way. And I'm going to talk to the school board, superintendent of the maintenance.
Well, Jason, how can I keep track of this? You know, find out what's going on as you need to look back at it?
We could talk.
You can call, you can call me. Or, you know, call, I'm Judy at Town Hall. You can call me at Town Hall, and I'll tell you what I know. Okay?
And Judy can give you my number, too.
John can, yeah, I can give you John's contact information also.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or on the consent calendar from council? Any other, any comments or questions from the public on the consent calendar? Come on up.
I have a question.
Wait till you get to the microphone and identify yourself.
Tony Utis, Seven Forest Terrace, Fairfax. I had a question about those trees on the property, and how does it comply or do with homeowners that are responsible for the trees that are outside their property, on the city's property? So I, I'm trying to understand how those trees have become the responsibility of the city, and how come they're not the responsibility of the landlord, owner, owners that own the property around there? That's my question around the, the thing about the trees on, what is it, down there by Good Earth?
I believe that is actually our property. Am I correct?
It's a city's property, the sidewalks, is what, what you're referring to?
I think it's if the city planted them.
Yeah, we planted them. They're in the right of way. So actually, the way it's going to work is we're going to replant them, but then they're going to be the responsibility of Good Earth to maintain them going forward.
Okay. Because I know if there's any trees that are a problem on my property that fall down, even though they're on the city's property, I'm responsible. So I'm just wondering how that works in that.
Yeah. Well, they will be responsible for them. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and ask for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion, O'Neill, second, Bragman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, our consent calendar carries, and we move on to our public hearing. This is adoption of Resolution Number 1270 of the Town Council, Town of Fairfax, adopting the findings for the granting of the appeal of the Planning Commission approval of a use permit modification to allow 7-Eleven to remain open 24 hours a day. Jim, do you want to kind of tee this up and give a little bit of a history for anyone who's coming in at the last minute?
Yeah, this has a long history. And for the public that's viewing, or those in the audience with a smartphone, or a tablet, or a laptop, all the prior staff reports are on the town's website, townoffairfax.org. There are numerous. There were four hearings at the Planning Commission. This is the fourth public hearing tonight before the Town Council. You heard this on the 11th of July, the 5th of September, and October 3rd. And most recently, you directed staff at the end of the last hearing to prepare findings upholding the appeal. We did. We included that in your packet. It's in the public packet. It's online, as I just mentioned. Yesterday, we received a letter from an attorney representing 7-Eleven articulating the reasons that they do not believe that the appeal should be upheld. And they also offered up a compromise, which would be that 7-Eleven would only be open from midnight till 6:00 in the morning, which is what the whole issue is about, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night. And they would close Monday through Thursday, and be closed from 12:00 to 6:00 in the morning, with the caveat that on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night, they would be allowed to sell alcohol till 2:00 in the morning. If you recall, one of the conditions that they've agreed to during the numerous Planning Commission meeting reviews was to not sell alcohol after midnight. The other opportunity to mediate the situation was to, in addition, limiting the hours of all-night operation to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night, they would voluntarily put in the sound wall that was discussed at prior meetings, and include the height of that sound wall back from the street high enough to block the appellant's window. The final piece of this letter that the attorney representing 7-Eleven offered up was that if, in fact, you go forward with upholding the appeal and adopting the findings and the resolution tonight, that resolution stipulates that your acting on this would go into effect on December 1st. And they request that you put off this going into effect until February, which gives them time to file a notice with the court and request that there's a, a hold on your determination until the court can get into this. So that concludes the presentation tonight in, in a very short order. And any questions?
Questions from the council members, or any statements from our attorney on this one?
Yeah, let me just suggest something. I mean, at the last council meeting, you came to a consensus, and then you directed us to prepare findings based on the record that would support a decision, to support your decision in that respect. We've done that, and the, you've had several hearings on this. I might suggest that you, you start I might suggest that you, you start by considering this resolution and take public comment on it, and then if you, you wanna hear further testimony about other matters, or consider some of the options that were, that Jim was talking about that were in that letter, that would be your choice. But at this point, what you ask us to do is prepare this resolution, and that's what's in the packet, and that's what presumably people have come to discuss.
Comments or questions from council members? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. And this is sort of sticking to the resolution.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Stephen Byers for 7-Eleven. I am the, one of the authors of the letter that Mr. Moore is referencing, and because we're just sticking with the proposed resolution, I will only address that right now. Staff's proposed resolution includes three main findings, and those findings all tie into subdivision B of the ordinance relied on the Moreno's attorney at last month's meeting. This is Fairfax Town Ordinance number 17.032.060. That ordinance, as you know, has four different subdivisions, but the Moreno's attorney focused only on, or I should say exclusively on subdivision B. And my review of staff's proposed resolution makes it clear that staff took subdivision B and used it in, in crafting the three findings. The problem with those findings, as expressed in the letter we sent you yesterday, are as follows. The first finding proposes to, this is page two of the proposed resolution. Number one, the approval of the modification to the use permit permitting 24-hour operations has resulted in and will continue to cause public nuisances, such as excessive noise during the hours from midnight to 6:00 a.m., excuse me, in the area of the property. As we point out in our letter to the Town Council yesterday, public nuisance, even just going by Fairfax's own definition of a public nuisance, has to involve more than just a couple of people, like the Morenos in this case. And I'll read the relevant part of that ordinance. This is ordinance 1.12.005. It defines a public nuisance as, quote, "Anything injurious to health, indecent, or offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property, so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property," and this is the key phrase, "by a neighborhood or by a considerable number of persons in the town." We have one appellant, Ms. Moreno. Her husband's not an appellant, but obviously, he claims to be affected by that. Under Fairfax's own definition of a public nuisance, it doesn't apply. And it's clear that Fairfax took its definition in part and modeled it after Civil Code Section 3480, which says a public nuisance is one which affects, at the same time, an entire community, or neighborhood, or any considerable number of persons. I've noticed in the staff reports a number of times, reference to, references to the fact that meeting after meeting after meeting, only the Morenos are coming to complain. That cannot, by definition, be a public nuisance. The second, so as a result, this first finding of the staff cannot be approved. Second, the staff proposes to state as follows, that the approval has caused and would continue to cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties, plural, or premises, including but not limited to appellant's property, in the form of undue or excessive burdens in the use and enjoyment thereof due to noise and litter. This language also comes from subdivision B of the ordinance that the Moreno's attorney relied on last month. Again, tracking the public nuisance language, again, public nuisance comes first in that subdivision B, and as we just saw, that has to involve a significant number of people. The very next phrase after "shall not create a public nuisance" is "cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to," and the Town of Fairfax, when it drafted this, did not use the singular adjoining property, which you do a search in the town ordinances, which you can through your website. When the town intended to refer to one property, it did so clearly many, many times. You referred here to plural properties or premises. So like with the public nuisance, by definition, one property allegedly is being affected, that by definition cannot fall under subdivision B, and therefore, you cannot approve finding number two by your staff. Third, staff proposes that the effects are substantially beyond that which might occur without approval of the modification, in which case, the property would not be open for business between midnight and 6:00 a.m. That substantially beyond language also comes from subdivision B of the ordinance, and when looking at that language, again, we would argue, as we just, as I just stated, that subdivision B cannot even apply to the Morenos in this case. But let's assume that the language was different. It referred to a private nuisance instead of a public nuisance, and it referred to a singular adjoining property. Okay, if we take those assumptions, the effects, the alleged detrimental effects, still have to be substantially beyond that which might occur without approval or issuance of the use permit. That's one thing, I listened to the audio from your meeting last month, the Moreno's attorney glossed over that. He read that language when he first read you subdivision B, but he never once put on evidence that all the alleged detrimental effects to his clients are substantially beyond that which might have occurred if the Planning Commission had never granted the use permit in the first place. And not only do they have no evidence that it's substantially beyond, the evidence is actually to the opposite. I've listened to your police chief testify before you on previous audio, and I've read his staff report comparing the time before the original approval of the use permit and after. And he testified a number of times that the complaints have decreased at the property. It's also been a benefit to the Town of Fairfax, because as you've seen previously, hundreds of Fairfax residents who frequent the 7-Eleven between the late hours of midnight and 6:00 a.m. have said they want this. So you have two people, one property, against the police chief's testimony that it's actually making this area safer, there's less complaints, combined with the fact that you have a number of your constituents who are asking you to allow this to remain in place. Thank you.
Can I pick up on a few?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, counsel, thank you for, I read your thoughtful letter very carefully, so help me work through a few things here. It's my recollection from the prior meetings that it wasn't just the Morenos. It was, at least two other folks came by here. I remember one brought a young child or two and suffered through the whole meeting. And there was a neighbor across the street who looked into the 7-Eleven, and unless I'm mistaken, and memory dims over them, over the weeks, there was also a petition that she had gathered from other folks within the curtilage surrounding the 7-Eleven. And so that, I think, is where our planning director, in the two wherethes above the now therefore, takes the, the measure of saying the appellant and other residents in the area, in the second to last whereas, and in the final whereas, the appellant and other residents that are sound wall. So I, I think that when I, when I was interested in how you characterized the public nuisance needing more than one, my distinct recollection is that, in fact, the neighborhood had demonstrated a particular interest in this. And so that, that's a major point that goes, you know, to your argument. As to the folks at 7-Eleven who signed the petition, while I never saw the petition, I always thought to ask, did the petition say, "Would you also sign this petition if you knew that keeping this store open would create, you know, sound and noise and all sorts of things that would keep your neighbors up?" I betcha, knowing Fairfax as I do, that residents in town would be reluctant to, to burden a neighbor with sound. So I, I sort of don't put that much weight on the petition in that, in that regard. And finally, perhaps you could explain to me, I'm not going to support your position, and I'm not going to support a change in the resolution from the December 1st. I don't see why we would have to push this off. You will have certain number of days under the code to file a mere notice with the court of not particularly great burden, and then time will elapse in which a record is established. Pushing this off until February merely means that the Morenos will have to suffer. If you feel differently than this, you can, of course, go in and seek a TRO. But I guess the major point that I would ask and highlight for your clients is one of the sense of community. Your clients are, are good and valuable members of our community. We've welcomed them, I had the chance to visit with them briefly at a chamber meeting over, over the summer. I'm hoping, I'm really hoping, that by merely rolling, not merely, that's incorrect, by rolling it back to where it was for all those many years, not even just a 7-Eleven, but a 6 to 12, which is an expansion of the traditional concept, I'm gathering, of 7-Eleven, is fair. And it balances the, the equities of where the store is in location, you know, right on the edge of our commercial and residential neighborhoods. And that, I am hoping that by going back to the 6 to 12, because after all, lots of testimony was elicited by Councilmember O'Neil, who really drilled down on the concept of, well, you know, what kind of money are we really making, are you really making here? And it was the woman in the, who represented 7-Eleven in the gray sweatshirt, who I believe, and I'm sure Ryan could jump in here, and say, "Well, really, the main thing here is that it's not about the money that's made off the sale of the milk and the bread and the Cheerios," which is very important, because it's not a real alcohol sort of situation, "but rather, it's the resale potential of the 7-Eleven, should the current owners decide to sell it." In fact, I think she said it was at least maybe two times the amount of money that they paid. That's my recollection, I'm sure it's in the, on the tape. I'm really hoping that we can go back to where it was before the Planning Commission took its action, and where this good store had been, the way it had been operating for so many years, without recourse to a writ, and the, the time and expense in a town which really watches its pennies and throws nickels around like manhole covers. It's, I'm really hoping that we're not going down that road. But again, thank you for a very thoughtful letter.
If you'd like to address, very quickly, please.
Oh, no, that's fine. You asked a lot of things, so I might not get them all, but quickly, you mentioned the lady who came with her kids. I did hear that part, if we're thinking of the same thing, I don't, I don't recollect that she was coming to, she was coming more to clarify the issue of where the noise was coming from. I think a statement had been made regarding causation. Is the noise the Morenos are hearing, is it coming from 7-Eleven? Is it coming from the fire station? Is it coming from the apartments, right, you know, to the left of the 7-Eleven? I think that mom was just coming to clarify that, in her opinion, based on being an apartment resident, it wasn't coming from her. She wasn't helping to put on evidence that she also felt that this was a nuisance or detriment to her.
She's here tonight, so I'm sure she'll be able to clarify that for us.
Sure. And please, stop me when I, I need to stop, but also to your point regarding, you said a petition presented by Ms. Moreno. I honestly, I've reviewed the record on your website, I haven't seen that at all. Maybe that went, came from a long time ago, but I did, as I said already, I did see clearly, I think Mr. Moore and his staff said consistently, Ms. Moreno and her husband are the only ones who showed up to complain, over and over and over again. So the evidence in the record, again, I haven't seen that, what you're talking about, first I've heard of it, is to the effect that this is one property complaining and two people. The resale potential, I know what you're talking about. You know, I guess from a political perspective, that's something you consider, and that's fine. From a legal perspective, that's not relevant to any of these four findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, go ahead, Larry.
I just got a question, and this is really to, a little bit to you, but also to our legal counsel, because I think some of your criticisms of the form of the findings may have some validity. But, you know, just from a grammatical point of view, isn't the word premises a singular form of a noun? These are my premises? I mean, that, that to me refers to a singular structure, singular property. So I, I'm just wondering if, you know, you're, you're sort of parsing the ordinance and forgetting about the subordinate clause, which says adjacent properties or premises. And I, I think really, you know, I think one of the primary reasons we were persuaded to, to make the findings that we did is that we heard the Morenos' testimony and felt that the operation, you know, the unceasing, never-ending operation of a commercial enterprise immediately adjacent to their residence caused an unreasonable detriment to their quiet enjoyment of their premises, a singular noun.
Isn't it, and I haven't boned up on my grammar recently, but isn't the plural of premises the same? I believe it is. And again, but in context, why then didn't the town put adjoining property or properties? Why change from properties to premises? It doesn't, it doesn't seem to make sense.
I think they did. I think, I think the, the use of the word premises is a singular noun. So, I mean, I think we may wanna clean up, you know, the findings, and maybe not refer to as a, as a nuisance, but as an excessive detriment, or whatever. It should, it should follow the language of the ordinance, but I, I'm not persuaded by that argument particularly. I think what persuaded us was we had testimony, we have to take it at face value, that it's, it's creating a real problem for these folks, and they are the adjacent premises. So that's, that's the standard we were looking at. We were really basing our decision on the ordinance. So, you know, I, I hope it doesn't have to go before a superior court judge, but in my opinion, you know, that argument about it being more than one property really is not reflected in the ordinance. And that's it for now. I, I think your letter's very thoughtful. I think the proposals that have been put forward by the store are interesting. You know, I don't know if that's a proper subject of our hearing tonight, but I do appreciate your appearance.
Thank you. Let me take more public comment on this.
Tony Utes, Seven Forest Terrace, Fairfax. We spent an awful lot of time on this, and an awful lot of your time on this, okay? And I had an incident occur, let's see, about two Saturdays ago, in front of Mr. Moreno's house. I was having a conversation with a few of my friends. He comes out and tells me to leave the front of his house, and I'm all, I don't have to leave public property, okay? And he went over to the police department, and I guess made a report or whatever, but I mean, nine o'clock in the morning, someone coming out of their house and telling you to move off the sidewalk, I don't really find as being very polite or respectful to the community. And the idea that these individuals seem to be the only ones complaining about this, I'm, I'm, what I've heard so far, you know, I'm, I'm having a hard time with it. I feel like they're a little biased, and I think even, as I feel personally, I think that if we don't fit or look the right image, and with the newcomers in this town, we're sort of looked upon as being not proper. And that's part of what I felt in this sort of discrimination against being different. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's the, I mean, I'm gonna echo what Larry and David have said. There were a number of people who came forward last time, it was my recollection, as, as well as a petition that was hand-delivered to us, and I don't, I guess that didn't get into the public record, but there was that, there was that, and there were also some email that came, I know, and maybe it's something that we can...
I believe it was delivered two meetings back, and I believe it was in the packet of last month. I may be mistaken.
I don't think, I think it was something that Ms. Moreno handed to us at this meeting.
In the subsequent meeting, I included it in your attachments.
I'm pretty certain. I'm pretty certain. I might be wrong.
Okay. So I just want to clear up that it is the impression of this council that there were numerous complaints. It was what moved our decision. Continue, public comment. Come on up.
Hi, so I guess I'm the mother in question.
Will you, please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Michelle Garcia-Losso. I live at 200 Bellinas, apartment number 77 here in Fairfax. So what I can say is that having 7-Eleven open 24 hours does create a quality of life issue here in Fairfax, along with the noise that brings the trucks and the clients going to Fairfax 24 hours. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Ross, and I feel like I'm in such an awkward position because I really don't want to feel like I'm, you know, arguing with residents of Fairfax, my fellow neighbors, or anything like that. But I guess, I think I've been at at least three of the four public hearings, and possibly even all of them, I can't remember now, and I guess I'm one of those people that really does support 7-Eleven. I really personally like the idea of having a store open 24 hours, and it's my understanding, I think we've rehashed this many times, but there's something like 40 people a night coming in, and the fact that they're not coming in for alcohol, you know, suggests that they're coming in for stuff that they need in the middle of the night. And I guess I just wish that there wasn't this kind of acrimonious situation, because as the attorney, you know, reiterated, I know everything that I've heard has said that the nuisance has actually decreased since the store has been open 24 hours. I've heard some of the complaints about things like skateboards going by at 2:00 in the morning, you know, or people coming from the bars or something like that. Well, maybe there are some problems with public nuisance or issues, but I don't see that they're directly related to 7-Eleven. So I'm just wishing that there would be some way to compromise, you know, I personally, in hearing, you know, the suggestion of the store being open over the weekend and then selling alcohol, for me, that sounds like it could create more of a problem because, you know, then people might be coming to buy alcohol at 2:00 in the morning, and, you know, I don't see that as, that could create more of a problem. But I just wish that there was a some way, not to keep rehashing this, but to allow 7-Eleven, you know, to stay open, and maybe with the police department, or I don't know who, but somehow being better enforcement, you know, if there really are people that are making too much noise or riding their skateboards at 3:00 in the morning, that maybe those issues could be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Please come on.
Hi, my name's Megan Arno, and I live at 161. I saw you guys last time. Just came to reiterate and say again that the noise does affect our house. We are directly across the street from it. And I have absolutely nothing personal against 7-Eleven. I love Sammy and I love AJ, and they're extremely helpful to our family, but it is loud at night. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Good evening again, Riley Hurd. Still representing the Morenos. Councilmember Weinsdorf took most of my speech, so I'll be very brief. I just wanted to respond to a few points that were brought up by 7-Eleven's counsel, remembering of course that you've already voted unanimously on this matter, and I saw nothing in the 11th hour communications that would look like it would change your mind, but I still think it's important for the record to respond at least briefly. First was the compromise, which really isn't before us, but it kind of strains the credulity of 7-Eleven to suggest that since what you care about is your work, will just impact your weekends and Sunday nights instead and sell alcohol for two hours later. So I thought that was a pretty tough offer to put forward with a straight face. Next is the suggestion that this must affect multiple properties. When you read the ordinance as a whole and think about its purpose, it's clear that that is not the legal standard, but we've already heard from two other parties this evening, so that discussion is moot. It does affect multiple properties, and the record is clear about that. Next, and I thought this one was most interesting, is the claim that this operations of 24 hours is not beyond what it would be at not 24 hours. So the Morenos have lived here for decades. They lived here before 24 and now during 24. They are very clear, and this is what I spent the last hearing discussing, and I'm not sure how it wasn't picked up, is that it's a lot worse at 24 hours. It's exponentially beyond, not substantially beyond, because it hits that breaking point. So I think that prong is met. Finally, the resolution. It's true. Council decisions require findings, and those findings have to be based on evidence. The record is replete with that evidence, and there was an interesting court case about this, and I'll just mention it because that's what lawyers do. Harris versus City of Costa Mesa in 1994, a court said oral remarks made at a hearing serve as acceptable evidence to support findings in a resolution. So even without the resolution, which isn't legally required, that threshold has been met. So I would suggest that you not be frightened by the threats in the 7-Eleven attorney's letter. I'm often in the position that he is in, of having to advise a client who believes they've been wronged by a governmental entity, and I have to explain to them the incredibly high threshold of succeeding in court, especially in a case such as this one. And that threshold's not met for 7-Eleven. So there's no way to stop anything from being filed, but I'm confident that your decision with the resolution as drafted would be upheld. So I ask you to stick with that decision, because the Morenos and the other neighbors who you heard this evening cannot take anymore. They're at a breaking point, and I thank you for listening to this issue so many times.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council.
And I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12, next in line, a resolution of the Fairfax Town Council granting the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the use permit modification, allowing 24-hour retail operations in 150 Bellinas Road, application number 79, U.P. 333, assesses possible number 02101-13.
Mayor, before we go there, I do have a question for our council, which is on the drafting of the findings. Whether we shouldn't edit finding one instead of public nuisances, change that to excessive or unreasonable detriment?
That is in finding two.
It's in finding two, but, you know, I do think there's some merit about this, whether it rises to the level of a public nuisance or not. So that's, I don't want to get it nitpicked by a court. So, you know, if you don't think that's material, I'm fine with the way it is, but I just hate to create an issue really where there is none. I don't really think our finding was that it created a public nuisance. I think we found that it created an excessive detriment to the adjoining properties, so I'm just, you know, I don't know if, whether we should commit to that language, which seems extreme.
Based on looking at the record and the testimony, I thought there was, there was testimony that there was a public nuisance. And I think it is really semantics. I think it, both concepts are mentioned here in the, in the various findings, findings one and two. And one thing I wanted to point out is, this is a resolution that is talking about why we cannot make all the findings necessary to issue the permit. The code requires that if you're going to grant a permit for, a use permit, that you're able to make all of these four findings. We don't need to recite all four and say, while we can't make them, the fact that we can provide evidence and state that some of them can't be made means we're done, because we cannot make all the findings. So that's sort of the theory of this. Having said that, I think we could say, public nuisances, we could add public nuisances and excessive or unreasonable detriment in that first clause. I mean, I don't think it hurts.
I asked that we do that just to...
Why don't we? Okay. So the change is in clause one, where it says, the second line resulted in and will continue to cause, we will say, public nuisances and excessive or unreasonable detriment. Such as excessive noise, et cetera.
Is that okay with you, David, as you made the motion? Okay. Motion Bragman, second, or second, I said, motion Weinsdorf, second Bragman. That was a, I don't know where that one came from. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, was that, was that an aye or opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, you're opposed. Okay.
Meg, could I just do a roll poll?
Okay. Let's start with you, David.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
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 Nay.
So the motion carries with a majority.
Sorry, the majority is four to one.
Right.
Okay. And the minutes should reflect the four, the four who voted for it and the one who voted against it.
Perfect. The minutes, got that? Okay. All right. Where are we at on time? I think it might be a good opportunity to take a break and come back for our regular agenda. Thank you everyone for your patience. Quick break. We are missing two council members. We are missing one council member. This is like a game I remember from preschool.
Where's Waldo?
Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and get us back in session. Where did, okay. I don't know where Ryan went, he was just here. He'll be right back. I know that there's a bunch of folks here for the Good Earth issue. I'm really, we also have Mark Pressman on our urgency issue, so we're going to get, try to get that one done quickly and move on to the Good Earth one and let our, let Mark get out of here. So Michael, do you want to queue this up for us? This is the late addition to our agenda, but related to two items on consent.
Right. This item that you're looking at here is the end result of Mark Pressman having approached the county, Roy Givens, with the possibility. I had initially asked him, see if we could do a line of credit or something with the county. The county, what he was able to discuss with him, and what Roy was willing to offer, was being able to borrow on a short-term basis, 35 days, sufficient cash to get us through our first property tax payment. This ends up being a lot shorter term than we had with last year's one, which was borrowed in August and paid back in May. Same interest rate, but the interest ended up being a lot higher because it was for a much longer period of time. So I thought that this was a good deal, and so in order to do this, the county needs to have a resolution signed. We'll be able to quickly expedite this thing with a minimum amount of paperwork at that point. Mark is available to be able to correct whatever my understanding of this was and/or add his own information to it or answer questions. Mark, if you'd like to come up the podium?
Yeah, go ahead. And for the benefit of all, this is something we always run a little bit short as our, as our income comes in in odd ways, and this is something that we do on a regular, a regular basis.
Right. This is a, this is a cash flow issue, because most, most cities get the majority or the biggest portion of their revenues is property tax payments, which we don't really receive our first one for the fiscal year until December. But we have six months of expenses up to that point. So, you know, it's great if you have a lot of reserves in the bank to be able to get you over that point, but, you know, we haven't had a lot of reserves to be able to fall back on. And this particular summer, we had a lot of Public Works projects that got done with Sir Francis Drake. We had about $600,000 worth of roadwork done up there, and that, that was a big draw on the cash that we had on hand at the point.
Thank you. Larry?
I actually think you may have answered my question, which was why we have such a shorter window this year than we had last year, but it's because just the periodic cash flow needs in the town.
Right. It's because we had large capital improvement projects that were actually done this, this summer, that we hadn't, that we had money in the bank for in the past that got, that got us over the hump last year.
Right, right, right. So it's just periodic differences in our cash flow needs. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Is there anything you want to add, Mark?
I talked with the county again tonight, and they said, is it done? And I said, well, it's not until tonight. They said, oh, I thought it was last night. But they are ready to fund on Friday, and then it would be paid off on December 14th, which is a Friday. And it's 35, 39 days, but it helps get you over the hump, so. And then it will be available again next year on a short-term basis, depending on what staff determines is needed to meet your cash flow requirements. And it's, it's one time to the well per year, but if Michael determines you need whatever amount, then that, that would be arranged through the county, and it's pretty well-greased right now, so.
Great. Any other questions or comments from council members?
I'd like to...
Go ahead, Brian.
I like the attire, the adjustment.
I've been recommended.
It's good, it's good.
He came in a suit.
Yeah. I think that this is a good opportunity to thank our finance director for a lot of reasons. Number one, when walking the Measure D campaign, there were a lot of questions about how we're doing with our money and what we're doing with their money, and why are you guys so messed up? And I think this is a good opportunity to, to reach out to the community and let them know that the answers all lie with Mr. Vavret. And it's very clear to find these answers now, and it was very difficult to defend positions when we had muddled decimal points and things in the wrong places, and it's hard for your council and your town to defend positions that aren't easily found in spreadsheets. And after looking at the budget and things like this, I just think it's a good time to thank you.
I agree. Are there any questions or comments from the public on this one? Mark?
Mark Bell, 63 Dominga. It's a little bit of a tangent, but it does go into the reserves. What's happening with all that money that FEMA owes us?
I think, Michael, do you want to address that?
I don't have an answer for you right at the moment. There is, there is a certain number of items that are in dispute on that, and so there hasn't been an active correspondence of recent with that. So beyond what, what we had, you know, a year ago, I haven't seen any update on, on that.
That amount was, that amount was like 700,000?
That amount was 700,000?
I, six, yeah. It was in the, I seem to recall it was like 490, but it might, it would be, it's quite a lot of money.
Well, maybe you should put interest on it.
Well, if we can get them to pay it, then certainly that would be...
I mean, I'm sure all those people in New York who got flooded have all been paying NFI money that's going to FEMA, so they should be really flush, right?
Well, there you go.
Even after that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion. Motion Bragman, second, Weinsdorf, he beat you to it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, both of you. Okay, moving on. We have a discussion and questions regarding the Good Earth Market Use Permit Compliance. Jim of Moore, have at it.
Okay. If you recall...
If you recall, at your last meeting during the public speaking period, there was a complaint made about the number of truck deliveries early in the morning for the Good Earth. And you all indicated that you had some questions about the status of the market complying with its use permit and requested that this item be placed on the agenda tonight. The memo that was provided to you in the packet describes the current status of the market's construction activities and compliance with use permit conditions, complaints that the town has received, and finally, background on the planning department's option for enforcing permit conditions. So briefly, and I'll try and paraphrase what was in the staff report for you. The entitlements, the right to do the project, were granted by the Planning Commission in April of 2011. And then, because the council has to approve any traffic impact analysis and SEQA documents, you all then approved the project on June 22nd, 2011. And among the conditions in your approval of the SEQA documents was the project description that stipulated only a certain number of trucks in the morning. We'll get to that in a second. After the project was granted, it's what we call entitlements. It then brought in working drawings on how the project was going to be built, and that went through a series of reviews, and is the case, then we issue a building permit. And is often the case in a project of this size, when construction is taking place and things are not quite as designed, or the soil turns out to be a certain way, or et cetera, et cetera, decisions are made in the field by the construction firm or those people managing the, the construction activities of whether to stop and go back to square one and try and get approval, or to just go through, make the changes in the field, and then come back later. So there were some changes that were made in the field. And so, when the construction was complete and the building official went out to inspect the project as built vis-à-vis the plans that were submitted for the building permit, and we knew along the way that there were some changes that were being discussed, we huddled amongst ourselves and the town attorney and decided we could, in fact, issue a temporary certificate of occupancy with the Good Earth coming in after opening, so we didn't slow them down. There's a lot of money on the line. If you recall, they went through a very torturous holdup during the summer over the Indian Minden Mound, et cetera, et cetera. So that one-year period is up in February of 2013. They are, in fact, putting together an application to go back before the Planning Commission/Designer Review Board to address those things that were built not as planned. As I mentioned, when the citizen spoke in the public mic during the public comment period, we were aware of the complaint from Mr. Franks at 13 Willow. And it's not that we're not sympathetic to any complaints to come in from the citizenry. We are, we care. Our job, however, is to impartially investigate, weigh the information, and then proceed along very careful lines in imposing and seeking compliance first if there are any violations of any approvals that took place. So we're coming up on a Planning Commission meeting, once the application is complete and routed to other agencies for a 30-day period. It will get on the Planning Commission agenda and presumably by the January Planning Commission docket, which is always the third, usually the third Thursday of each month is the Planning Commission in this room. So the complaints that were made about the market were in the number of trucks coming before 7:00 in the morning. As I mentioned previously, the project description that the SEQA document, the Environmental, California Environmental Quality Act review, was predicated on, and we actually subsequently discussed in a community meeting in this room, reminding the applicant that that was, in fact, what was stipulated in this project description, and that, in fact, is what they would be held to, guaranteeing the neighborhood that that was the game plan. And that stipulated one 60-foot truck between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning and two 45-foot trucks between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. in the morning. So, you heard the complaint, and we agendized it tonight, and that's what we're here to discuss. The caveat is that since we're aware of this complaint, we will be revisiting the issue of truck delivery in the Planning Commission hearing to ascertain whether or not the game rules, if you will, are being followed, and if, in fact, the Planning Commission wants to seek further guarantees for compliance or revisit the allowable trucks before 7:00 in the morning. And before I get to the options of enforcement of the town for a moment, let me just add a little bit to the complaint piece of this. After the last meeting, I spoke on the phone with Mr. Steve Franks. He was going to come into the office to have a face-to-face, and with Mark Lockaby, our building official also. He kindly called me and said, we may not have to meet, let's talk for a minute. So we discussed the matter, and in the course of that discussion, I asked that if, in fact, through compliance, they were able to get back to the 160-footer between 5:00 and 6:00 and the 245-footers between 6:00 and 7:00, that whether he'd be okay with that. And it became apparent, and he can speak for himself tonight, but I was interested to find out that he doesn't think they should be allowed to deliver any, with any trucks before 7:00 in the morning. And as you heard at his comment at the public mic last month, he works for United Markets, his wife works for United Markets, and they apparently, we've had a little bit conflicting information about that, but according to Mr. Franks, they do not have deliveries before 7:00 in the morning. So I'm sure it's a source of frustration for him when he hears a backup beep or the engine in the morning, that it's not only noise coming that's not supposed to be coming in these volumes of trucks, but it's counter to what his organization is allowed to do also. And I can, I can understand how that would be frustrating. So, moving on to our options for enforcement. We basically have three routes that if you cannot get compliance with the operator of the store, we have the administrative citation ordinance, as if you recall, we passed about three years ago to give us sort of an intermediate approach to getting people to wake up and understand that they can't ignore these things. And that's a opportunity for successive fines that don't go away. The next level is a nuisance procedure, as before you all, and it sort of calls the situation on the carpet, if you will. And then the third and final action, which is the most severe, is enforcement action to revoke a use permit. So, at this stage, we're seeking, we're, we are working with the market to seek compliance. We've attached to your report, the incident report that Mr. Lockaby provided to me via a memo on October 31st, recounting the occurrence of trucks that were not allowed under his observation and also under the police observation, since that's attached to your report. Again, we will be revisiting this issue of the early morning truck deliveries and additional conditions may be imposed. Revisiting this issue may involve either gaining compliance from the market and/or modifying the number and/or the time of early morning truck deliveries. So with having said this, we're requesting direction from you as to whether we should pursue other enforcement actions at this time besides going through the process of the Planning Commission hearing and revisiting the conditions of approval.
Can you tell me if you've had a chance to talk to Good Earth about whether their, their goal is compliance or their goal is to change the...
I have not directly.
Okay.
But Mr. Lockaby, our building official, who is the enforcement arm, if you will, has been in touch with them. Thanks to your urging, I made sure they got a copy of the report last Friday and that they were here tonight aware of what's going on in the public forum outside of the due process we would normally be following.
Thank you. Are there questions from council members to staff? Ryan?
Before we hear the testimony of the public, do you, Jim, have any prior delivery score, a delivery scheduled to the prior grocery store? Does anybody have any history on what was there before? Like, were there any regulations on deliveries or any that to fall back on?
Not on the top of my head.
I don't think we had restrictions on the Good Earth, but I know on deliveries. We had some issues where they, there were some issues... Will you turn your microphone on so we can...
There were some issues about how the trucks went through the property, and there were some suggestions about how to make it safer and so forth. That's the only thing I remember coming up about deliveries there.
And does anybody have any history on when, when was the closure of, was it Lucky? Like, when was the last?
That was 2006, I believe.
So we're not going that far back. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from council members? Let's open it up to the, oh, did you want...
Well, one, that, I mean, you have some specific dates that Mark Lockaby observed, and also some police reports. Are those complaint-based? I mean, are those just when you happen to be there, or is that, is that indicative of a, a general pattern, or is it just those days that we're talking about?
Let me, let me speak for Mark Lockaby, the building official side of things. He comes in very early to work, so he made it a point of starting to check it out. Chief?
Of, of the ones that were in Mark's report, the, some of them were citizen-generated, and the others were generated by us because I directed my officers for a two-week period to, as they could, if they weren't tied up on something else, during these timeframes to check it on their own. And so, of the, I don't have his report in front of me, but of the total calls of noise complaints, there's, some were citizens and then some were generated by us, where we either didn't observe a truck or we did observe a truck. And the times are all listed.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to public comment.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Franks, I live at 19 Willow Avenue. My name is Stephen Franks, I live at 19 Willow Avenue. I am the one that's complaining about the noise. I didn't bring my attorneys or anybody else in the neighborhood. I am a single person, speaking for myself. I don't even know where to start with this. It started about nine months ago, and I'm woken up every morning except for Sunday morning at, starting at 3:30 in the morning, 3:30 a.m. I was down there this morning, they were, had too many trucks in the parking lot this morning. If you look at your staff report, you can glance at that with Mark Lockaby driving by in a four-second picture frame, taking a look over his shoulder to see what's in the parking lot. That is not enforcement whatsoever. He punches in at 7:00. I can't blame him. You guys aren't paid to sit down there in that parking lot at 3:30 a.m. Neither am I. I wish I was, I'd have a lot of money in my pocket right now. The police department did a fantastic job. Every time I called, they were down there. I called, I talked to Chris, I talked to the acting sergeant, get to his name, when Chris was out of town a month ago. I said, look, guys, I don't want to take you away from patrolling the town of Fairfax. I don't want to cause problems. I want you guys to do your job. What works for you guys? We came to an agreement that if I called before 5:00 a.m., when they weren't allowed any deliveries at all, then at, this is going, starting in October, about October 4th or something, I've got documentation going back nine months in this camera right here with the dates and times. It's happened, don't kid yourself, six days a week, starting at 3:30 o'clock in the morning with backup beepers, endless trucks. I've got documentation here. Chief looks at this and he says, back in October, when I just said, okay, let's just do it this way, so I don't cause too much trouble. I'll do it once a week. I'll have you guys come down, you guys can take a little report, which he's got in his books for documentation, because you're looking at the staff report, not seeing a scratch of what the noise is down there. That does not say much at all about what's going on down there at that time in the morning. And I'm fed up with it, you know? I'm just done with it. I was down there this morning, I've been woken up every morning for that amount of time. Even on Sundays now, I wake up at 4:00 a.m. Just bing, I'm awake, even without the trucks. But there's a ton of trucks down there, there's no end in sight, so there's no enforcement. The police can't do anything because there's no noise ordinance that says that they can't have backup beepers because it's intermittent, so they're stuck. They can, all they can do is document it. Jim, who, you know, quite, I don't know, quite possibly could do something about it, can't do anything about it because he doesn't have somebody down there enforcing it. I've never seen Mark down there at 4:00 in the morning. I don't expect him to be down there at 4:00 in the morning. He punches in at 7:00 in the morning, like I said, you know? I mean, there's no end in sight to it. There's no enforcement, other than myself, and I've got the documentation, all that you want to see, you know? It's, it's, it's in the report. I haven't taken up too much of their time, you know? I've done what I think is the right thing to do, everything that I could do properly, and the frustration level is huge. They've got recycling that in the use permit says that they can't pick up the recycling until 8:00 a.m. 8:00 a.m. is when the recycling trucks can, can come in and pick up the recycling, glass recycling, which is a container this size being picked up 12 feet up in the air with a hydraulic lift dropped into the back of a truck. They can legally do that from the contract of Garberino's, which I've gone down there in person and talked to, and shook his hand, and says, I said, Dave, every morning at 5:00 a.m. I get woken up by three big, huge containers of glass getting dropped 12 feet high. It doesn't make sense, it can't happen in a residential neighborhood. You're waking up the whole valley, everybody just doesn't know what's happening, where the noise is coming from, because the truck's gone by the time you get dressed and walk out and walk down to the corner. He says, legally, we can pick up the garbage, Steve, at 4:00 a.m., and that's what we can legally do, you know, for the, for, that's what they can do. So there's no, nobody can stop that from happening. Nobody can stop, Jim, you can't stop a truck from coming into that parking lot at 2:00 in the morning, any amount of trucks. You can't do it. The only way that we can do that, and the owner of Good Earth is not going to police his own parking lot, he's proven that over this time. He's had, you guys have gone down there and talked with him and said, look, can you, you know, follow your basic guidelines, which is 5:00 a.m. delivery, one truck? He can't even do that, he's not willing to do that because he's at home in bed. He couldn't care less. So I, I do work, I've got 30 years that I've worked at a grocery store local, my wife is 22 years locally. I don't work at United Market. I work at another market, Scotty's Market. 52 years between us, I'm young, you know, my wife and I. And there is conflicting arguments about United Markets, they do not have a backup delivery dock. So their, their beeping trucks do not, the trucks aren't allowed to beep. They can open up their gated, their chained parking lot at 6:00 a.m., and trucks can pull into the parking lot without backing up. They're not allowed to back up, and they do police that. And they, the owner of United Markets is a true gentleman, you know? He, he is there for his community, Bill Daniels, and he, he would get out there himself and say, no, we're not doing this, you know? The trucks are not allowed to be here waking people up at 4:00 a.m., 3:30 a.m. And, you know, I, I don't even know what to say at this point. So that's basically, in a nutshell, it. If you want evidence, the camera, you guys could take a look, and there's 60 pictures in there of these trucks from July on, you know? And it's just a matter of what time I want to wake up and go down there and take pictures. They'll be there tomorrow morning at 4:00 in the morning, I guarantee it. Unless the owner gets on the thing tonight and cancels all deliveries, they'll be there tomorrow, you know? That's about it, really, you know? Then if, if, if the owner can stand up here and tell me I'm wrong, good luck, you know? You can't fight dog, you know, pictures and, and reports. So, any questions?
I think we've got, we've got the record in front of us. Thank you.
There you go.
For your comment.
If, if...
I'm two doors up from you.
Yeah, and you can't hear too much...
I don't hear a thing.
Right, and people do, for different reasons, don't hear that noise. But as, as far as like earlier, how many people does it affect? It does affect other people, but some people take sleeping pills, some people put foam in their ears, like my wife does. Right now, in my windows, I have foam board that's two inches thick in my bedroom that I've lined my windows inside my room. Do I really need to do that? You know? And it doesn't stop the noise. I've got double-pane windows with foam on the inside, and it's, it's matting, you know? I've slept on the floor in the closet, and it's just ridiculous, you know? So, there you go.
Thank you very much. Al?
Wow. Let me first say, Frank.
You should stick your name for the record.
Steve. Yeah, I'm sorry. Al Balak, Good Earth, Natural Foods.
If you could address us, ideally, that's the appropriate...
I will take all data around truck deliveries to my email, to my mailbox, dropped off personally. I'll take it all, because we are fighting too. We have, we have, we have staff that fully don't understand, we have companies that fully aren't in control of everything their companies do, and we have drivers that change and frankly, what I'm feeling, don't care what the rules are. So the... drivers that change and frankly, what I'm feeling don't care what the rules are. So the, the idea that the owner, or Mark and I, the owners of the store, don't care about our community is insulting. I'm going to record for that. I've never been contacted by Mr. Franks and again, I will take all data and welcome conversation at getting you to a place, getting the situation dealt with. I add a couple of things that I intended to add before that display. We had a truck, we had, we had a produce company that until very recently, one month ago, almost a month ago today, that thought that they had the rights to pull onto our property before 5:00 a.m. and they have been straightened out. And there was miscommunication with our produce delivery, I mean, our produce receiver and that produce delivery company. That has been straightened out. I, and before I go on there, I, I welcome trying to address this in a slightly different form and, and proactively working at setting up the rules and then abiding by the rules that are put into our, into our situation. I want to, I could hand out, and maybe that's, and I certainly will hand out to the, a couple of folks in the audience here, what we have on paper and, and really are looking to enforce moving forward. It's been on paper for, for about three weeks and I, I actually sincerely apologize that this has not reached us at the top all of the months in the summer, going through the summer. This issue of, of sound did not reach us and I take responsibility for that. I'm not shunning that and I'm just sincerely apologizing for that to you.
Didn't, didn't Jim and Mark go down and ask you guys to follow your use permit?
Throughout the summer.
You know, we, we.
Well, maybe, I just wanted to apologize. I didn't mean to turn around.
This is why Al needs to address us and not you.
And I welcome conversation. So I have, we have a procedure and that, that there are a couple of steps involved at if and when infractions happen in the future. And I am really surprised to hear anything, any delivery before 5:00 a.m. I have to be honest, I did not check today, but any, I have delivery sheets in front of me by my staff that go back weeks now since putting this policy in place that there has not been a truck prior to 5:00 a.m. Now, again, I welcome, you know, I welcome the data. So I'd be happy at this point, I was, my, my plan at coming tonight was to hear it out. I did watch the full council hearing last, well, a few weeks ago when, when Jim let me know it was on tape. So in preparation, I, I just, I have those, I have the procedure in place. Maybe that will help in terms of background. I know it could help support some folks in the audience and I don't have much more than that. I look forward to the, to the planning commission meeting and, and really putting in place long-term. There's a lot of trial and error for us. We're only two human beings. This has been an unbelievable life, unbelievable year in life and I, again, I apologize in exiting here that that has caused considerable pain and suffering, it sounds like. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your apology. I think it's the goal of everyone here to get, get compliance happening ASAP. Other public comment?
Lane Sprague on Bell Avenue. I just wanted to say that Steve Franks is, he's not alone in what he's hearing. There's many people on, in my neighborhood also who are disturbed. In fact, I heard this was coming up and I don't call the police all the time, although I did call on Tuesday morning because somebody was on the loading dock banging and doing something. I don't know what they were doing, but the police were called on Tuesday morning. That happened before when they were assembling stuff on the loading dock at, you know, 11 something at night. It's a general disregard for the fact that they're in a neighborhood. It's just not paid attention to and there are people there all night working. It's like a 7-Eleven kind of thing, a 24/7. This is an email that I sent at 3:15 in the morning on May 15th. I CC'd the council. I CC'd Michael Rock. Maybe you remember it. Larry, I think you responded to me. I think David did as well. And, and Al's response to me, but it was 3:15 on a Tuesday, very loud, disturbing, the sleep of the neighbors, huge truck arrives and backs up. So it's not like, and Al apologized to me then too. But, you know, if he can't control what's happening, then we have to revisit it at the use permit process. And as you recall, former meetings when I went on and on about sleep deprivation and what it does do physically. I really support a 7:00 a.m. delivery schedule and I have found out also that there's many, many markets that are in residential areas that are not allowed to deliver in the nighttime. Among them in the, both of the Whole Foods in Mill Valley. They bring in their delivery truck, which I believe is the same big truck that comes in early in the morning. They bring it in at 8:00 at night and they have the night to, to sort things out. And, you know, I was told by the manager over there, they didn't see any reason why that couldn't happen here. So it's an industry standard nowadays and in, at the use permit, planning commission meeting, I intend to have evidence and letters and documentation for that. And I can put this into the evidence or do you already have it as part of your email record?
We should have it, but I'm, but why don't you hand it to Judy just in case?
Okay.
Thank you, Lane. Cindy? One more time, please.
Hi, I'm Cindy Ross again and this isn't directly about noise. I mean, I have to say, I, I live right near the Good Earth, but on the other side, you know, I'm right near Center and Pastoree. And except for maybe one time when I had the windows open, you know, I, I heard some beeping, some noise at, you know, 5:00 in the morning or something, but other than that, it hasn't been an issue. But I, I guess I'm just really wondering, and this is a little bit of a different concern that I have, and in some ways, it's gotten a little bit better since the store first opened, but there's, you know, the parking and traffic impact on the neighborhood has really been a little bit overwhelming. And I guess my question is, and I, I hope that this is an appropriate time to bring it up, but I've noticed the way that the, the parking signs are worded around the area of the Good Earth parking lots, but then also on the other side of the street near the post office and the Fairfax Plaza. They say parking for Good Earth, Java Hut, I don't know, it lists a few different businesses in the post office on all of the signs. And I guess what I'm just noticing is it seems like there's a lot of parking for the Good Earth in all the other parking lots. And I know there have been some occasions, like if I've been, I don't know, driving out to West Moran or coming back and want to stop at the post office or, you know, if there has been any time that I've tried to use my car in any of those parking lots around there, it's often really difficult to actually get, to park for any of the other businesses or any of the other, you know, venues there. And I, I guess I'm just wondering if, if it's really okay for people to be parking all over the place just because those signs say that everybody can park there. It just seems to me that it would make more sense for Good Earth Parking to be at Good Earth and, and other businesses to have some spaces also. Oh, thanks.
And I think just to address that really quickly, the, the Fairfax Plaza owners are determined the parking. It's their, that's their, it's not, the, the Good Earth doesn't determine. The Fairfax Plaza folks own everything on both sides of the street and so it's, it's really up to them how they kind of manage that, that piece of it.
So is, is it presently, is it true then that if you want to go to the post office or, so I mean, does that mean that if somebody's going to the post office, they can park in the Good Earth parking lot? I mean, so, you know.
Yes, it's all part of Fairfax Plaza.
Okay. All right, just, thank you.
Other public comment? Sierra.
I'd like to see the Good Earth move back to 781 Bolinas Road and (applause) open up small neighborhood stores in all the neighborhoods and I'd also like to see us get rid of all the frigging cars, period. And that's it.
Other public comment?
Line up a few.
Hi, Gwen White. I would encourage the council to move forward and direct the planning commission to stick it to the Good Earth. This, this Good Earth and what's gone on here in Fairfax is terrible, terrible, because I see how the, the town of Fairfax treats its residents when something's wrong with the property, they go right after them. Good Earth lets, you're letting them get away with murder here, murder. And then you have the 7-Eleven, the poor 7-Eleven people. I mean, with the noise and this has been going on and sidewalks taken out in the middle of the night and painted red and then cut out. It's like, you guys need to get with it and get on Good Earth. This is ridiculous.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If you want to speak on this item, please line up. It's getting late.
We already, we went out of turn earlier, so we're here later than we should have been. But anyways, it's a shame this, this is going to have to be put off for the January planning commission meeting. Excuse me, Steve White, 600 Cascade Drive. It's really not acceptable that the owner doesn't know what's going on in his business that people are complaining to his managers about deliveries going to his building. Just because he has a log that says that his delivery is accepted at 6:00 in the morning doesn't mean the truck didn't pull up at 5:00. I drive by there every morning at 5:00. I don't live near the Good Earth. The noise doesn't directly affect me, but I hear about the complaints from my friend. It's driving him nuts. The trucks are there almost every day I drive by. You know, I would, I'd like to know how long a business can operate with a temporary certificate of occupancy. I work in construction. Usually those aren't for a year. How long can they operate? And I'd like to know what have they not, what did they do that wasn't permitted? When I drive into town, the building looks like crap. I see a loading dock. I see a trash compactor, stacks of pallets. I see a sign that's eight foot wide that says Good Earth, the four-foot sign that says Fairfax. It, it looks crappy there. It does not look good. I, I see you smiling and rolling your eyes. It does not look good. The, you drive up Sir Francis Drake next time you come home and you look in there and it, it, it looks like the back of a building. That's the front of our town. You come up center, it does look like a nice building, but it doesn't look nice. They, they have, they didn't build to their permit. I've been in the building. It's not built to code and it's, and what about the mechanical equipment on the roof that I see from the, when I drive up? Any other town, screens, equipment that's on the roof. You should not see mechanical equipment up on a roof when you are on the street. Standard principles for, that a planning commission should be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. And the planning commission will be.
Oh, and there's, there's one other thing. I hope that it was just a typo, not a Freudian slip, but it says on the bottom of item three, it says that the, "At that time, the planning commission may approve, comma, approve." I assume that was supposed to say disapprove.
Okay, is there any other public comment on this issue? Okay, Ryan?
Well, to specifically.
Sorry? We'll make mine short.
Okay. If there's anybody else who would like to do public comment, please line up right now. Thank you.
My name's James Hurd. I'm resident of Fairfax, 84 Chester Avenue. I am fortunate enough to not hear the noise from the supermarket. We are, they are working on a temporary use permit. 5:00 a.m. is not a great time to be woken up. This doesn't seem to be what we have throughout the county for this type of business. We have an opportunity to rework this and, you know, make our neighbors in the area, you know, a better place. I am a shopper at Good Earth and this is an opportunity to rectify this problem and it should be able to be rectified. Thank you.
That's why we're here. Thank you. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Ryan?
I'll try to take this in the way I wrote my notes down, which was, which was backwards. And I'll start by saying overall, you know, I, I run a business, I, I work for a couple of jobs, in fact, and I think in community-oriented work that we do, it's easy to listen to the complaints of few and forget about the needs of business. So before I get into everything I want to say about this issue, I want to remember that businesses should not be vilified, like a single individual person should not be vilified for their opinions. We need businesses to thrive and we need businesses to work with the individuals that they support. And I just want to go on the record for that because the 7-Eleven made a ton of concessions in an attempt to try to work out their problems. Eventually, they didn't get any, what they ultimately went after, but it was the compromise that was very refreshing for me to see. And I want to put that out there for businesses and people because all the things that come to us need compromise and we also have to make sure we're listening to the people and not ignorant to the facts of what's going on. To address Mr. White, I, I can, I can, I, I like to hear your complaints. I think that changes to business aren't relevant in regards to the signs and the things on the top because we spent a year going over all the details. There were drawings, there were plans, there was praise. It's like somebody coming in, talking about the budget a year after the meeting was held. Although I can appreciate your opinions, I don't find them as relevant to discussions we're talking about in regards to this issue. And was it Mrs. White? I, I hear your frustration too, you know? And I think that all the things that you mentioned about the cutouts on the streets, again, until we find out their problems, we can't try to address them and try to solve them, but I can hear the frustration there too. Certainly to, to Mr. Franks, I had, I had about 10 questions written down here to ask you and you answered all of them for me and I, I feel genuine effect that you, I, I can feel that you are impacted. And I, and it really does take someone, if I'll say it, to get really pissed off before people understand, hey, this is getting out of hand and no one's addressing this. So in regards to the Good Earth stance, you know, the apology is good, you know? The openness to communicate and solve the problems is good. I, I find the ignorance to the issue absolutely amazing because I'm up early sometimes and I remember going through the surets and I remember the community, I remember Elaine Sprague down here very concerned and everybody was really pulling for the market to work and, and the, the community really worked, in my opinion, with the town and with the business to make it work because it fit the town's personality. It was a store before and I think at the end of the day that they came to a lot of conditions that they weren't really happy about, but they ended up being able to live with. And ultimately, those business owners that stand to benefit from the profits of their investment unfortunately also have to handle the risks and negative aspects to those decisions. Business owners stand to make a lot of money, they stand to lose a lot of money, but at the end of the day, they have to answer to the people that they made promises to. I'm offended a little bit from the standpoint that the, the Good Earth wouldn't have any idea that this is really going on and that people were mad because I would just go into the Good Earth and hear people talking about this and I'm only in the Good Earth once every two weeks. And maybe it's because I have a higher-profile job that people come explain these things to me, but I, I have a hard time thinking that the Good Earth didn't try to address this issue before it got Mr. Franks to this level. There's great news here and the good news is that this is absolutely, totally workable. I mean, at the end of the day, if this was my business, and there's a lot, there's a lot to go over, I'm sure, in the first year of any business, there's a lot of things from personnel to machinery. there's a lot of things from personnel to machinery to everything. I would make this my highest priority, because the, the Good Earth has such a great reputation in the county, in the papers. Everybody loves it. But if people are, are angry and we don't get this solved, it's just going to take away from what could be a very good idea. I was very intrigued to hear about new opportunities for delivery schedules. If it's night, that's fine. That glass dropping from 12 feet, it, it would be a, a deal breaker for me. And the fact is, is I don't know how we as a, as a council, or as a staff, or as a police department, need to address the enforcement. But I would think that we could work this out and make it so that everybody is satisfied. And maybe that means going back to drawing board on the entire delivery schedule, because no one should be that put out that it gets to that level.
Larry?
Yeah, I think we've got a lot of work to do on this situation. And just a question I wanted to direct to staff, and actually Jim. Do we have authority to pass an ordinance where we can cite the truckers delivering? Because it, it sounds to me like it's, you know, some of it is this new business is trying to get its scheduling figured out, you know, how do they coordinate deliveries? But, you know, if in fact it is, you know, delivery people that are making deliveries, knowing they're not supposed to show up, but they figure, hey, you're number one on, on the list, I'm just going to come no matter what. You know, maybe this council needs to pass an ordinance or consider an ordinance where we can cite delivery or cite truckers that are coming in, you know, and violating these noise ordinances. Because it sounds like, so it may not just be Good Earth, you know, there may, it, there may be more players that we need to be sort of considering as far as some kind of a legal remedy. So my question to you is, can we do that?
Well, we can certainly enforce noise ordinances that exist of the town or other ordinances. It sounds like you may be saying, talking about a new ordinance, maybe regulating delivery times or something like that.
Well, if, if we, if we have, if, if this business, you know, has a use permit saying deliveries between, you know, 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM, two trucks, 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM. If we've got trucks coming in at 4:00, 3:30, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, the Good Earth may not necessarily be able to control that. But maybe we can help them and help the neighbors by passing an ordinance, putting a sign up at, at the store, saying no deliveries before 6:00 AM, subject to Fairfax Municipal Ordinance Number, whatever, and start citing them. So they'll, they'll have something to remember, you know, the, the infraction by.
Get your microphone.
Sorry. Right now, your remedy is against the person who holds use permit, of course. But if you want to go against the, the truckers, you would have to find some ordinance that they're violating. I, I would have to research if there's any limitations of state law preemption based on regulation of commerce, that sort of thing. I don't think there is, but at this point, we don't have such an ordinance. So the, really, the only way you can regulate is by imposing sanctions on the Good Earth.
I just think, you know, it's something we need to consider, because, you know, I understand what Mr. Franks is saying, and, you know, the issue's been rattling around in these chambers for quite a few months. So, you know, I, I do, I know you guys have been in touch with Good Earth and, and trying to work it out. But, you know, I do think it sounds like there may be some willful disregard of their use permit by third parties that are coming in. You know, there may be more the Good Earth can do, but, you know, there may be more than one way to skin this cat, and I just would like to get a short memo from you. Can we do it? Is that spot zoning? Can we, like, pass an ordinance, create, you know, an area of enforcement where we really are focusing an ordinance, you know, controlling delivery times?
Not that we endorse skinning cats.
Jim?
For a second, you, you bring up an interesting couple of points that we're chewing on in preparation for crafting a staff report, making recommendations to the Planning Commission. For example, what if, in fact, the parking lot was chained off until a certain time? Say 7:00 in the morning? I think I'm, I might have heard Mr. Franks discussing that that's the case in one of the markets. So then the truck arrives, double parks on Pastore, idles its, its engines. That's, we're, we're already going there, thinking about that. Okay. Another little nuance, if you're thinking before 7:00 in the morning, is this very annoying beeper. And start of, part of our background analysis, we're starting to understand that some markets don't let them back up early in the morning. They take the forklift and they drive it. They don't back up. So we're starting to think through these steps, which is part of the due process that I know is so frustrating when you want something to happen now. But we're, we're thinking those things through. But you bring, you cut the chase with the issue of the trucks on the road, independent of the use permit.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other comments from council? John?
Sure. Yeah, I guess when first thinking about this, I mean, say it's been rattling around here for a while, yes, it's been rattling around the community for a while. And, you know, I've, I know people who work at Good Earth, and I hear stories from them overhearing Mark on the phone, talking to trucking companies, saying, can you please not do this, if you're here again? You know, I mean, so I hear stories from that end of it. But having done this use permit a year ago, which has the early deliveries, which, you know, we were told that these were absolutely necessary, and then hearing that it's, sounds like an industry norm that that doesn't happen in residential neighborhoods. I mean, I, Whole Foods is a much bigger company, you know, and they, I have a feeling they have some cloud in negotiating with trucker companies when they can get there. But, you know, Good Earth is not that small. You know, it's, it's, it's pretty big around here, anyway. You know, I mean, I'm sure it's a, it's a bigger problem. I mean, that, that's my impression, is, is that the Good Earth is trying. Maybe their communication is not good enough so that they don't know about it, but it sounds like they're hearing about it now. And all we can do is go forward. You know, I, I think the, the backing up issue, we covered a little bit earlier, a, a year ago when we were talking about this, just because of the physical configuration of where that building is and where the, how the parking lot is situated. Having a truck pull straight in without having to back up, didn't seem like an option at that time, and maybe that's worth relooking. I, I think really Larry's idea of an ordinance around delivery times in the town of Fairfax would be able, you know, it, it needs to be bigger than Good Earth. So that's where I'm leaning.
David?
A few thoughts. Al is a good guy. Mark's a good guy. They run in an important store in this town. They provide a service that is beloved. They're a good employer. They're good people. I don't agree that we should be piling on with new ordinances. And I don't believe that we're going to have to trigger the power that we have here, because I truly believe in our town, the Good Earth is going to find a way to adjust, because everything that you folks have said is exactly right. And I do not think that I am wrong in my belief that the Good Earth is going to adjust and amend its policies, and is going to become extremely more proactive as soon as they can, even before the impaneling of the Planning Commission to review this. I know this is true. I just know that it is not within the DNA of that company to, to do harm to the residents. And I could see between the two of you, separated by a row, the, the frigidness that is going on here. It's not going to continue. Because that company is going to change the way, because that is the way they do business. That is, that is at the core of who they are. Everything you've said is exactly valid. If there are no changes, if there's business as usual down the road, the penalties that we're able to prescribe, as the Planning Director went through in our memorandum, will come to bear. But I'm telling you that unless I am sadly mistaken, and I don't think I am here, I think you're going to see some changes, maybe not tomorrow morning. But in the short term, you're going to see some changes, and there are going to be adjustments. Because at the end of the day, that store, as much as any other, represents who we are as a community. And those guys who run it, and all the people that are there, when you're in that store, when you talk to them as management, you, you truly get the feeling that they are not, they're not divorced from our town. They are inimical to who we are. They are, they started here. They grew here. They are us. And we do not divide and conquer among ourselves. We will work this out, and I would hope on the corporate side, that I know Al and Mark are hearing this. And on your side, I would say, as, as difficult as it is, and, you know, granted, I live up the hill from you, and I don't hear it. So I'm not woken up at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, so it's, it's somewhat facile for me to suggest this. But I really am wanting to give your town and that company just, just the slightest bit of rope, not to hang ourselves, but, but to pull ourselves to safety.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just, I don't know what else to say. This is an option, this, we brought this on the agenda because there were complaints. This is how we're dealing it. This is the town process. It's not always perfect. It's not always fast. It's not always an instant fix. But I think that if everybody can take a deep breath and let the process work, and we have, you know, we have, you know, strategies in place to deal with non-compliance, we will put those, we will utilize those strategies if we have to. This is the first meeting where we've had both, you know, the citizens who are having problems and the owner in the same room. And so it is absolutely my greatest hope that movement will happen and change will come. And if it doesn't, then we'll, we'll move on to the next step. And we want to, you know, we, they obviously hear the reports are differing from what Al's reports are getting. This is new information for him, maybe. And this is his, you know, this is their opportunity to remedy the situation. And if they don't, then we, then we move forward with, with, with any non-compliance that we, that we're finding. So I want to encourage everyone to understand, this is the process, and I appreciate you for being here, and, and encourage the patience, and I appreciate the Planning Department for bringing forward, and the police for making the records, and, and let's, you know, let's, let's let the process do exactly what the process does and move forward on it. There's nothing in front of us for, to vote on. I think people have received direction. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We have a next item on our regular agenda, is number 13, reporting on a parklet concept and its possible use as a public open space in the town of Fairfax. Jim, this is you, so.
All right. On a lighter note. So a while back, you all asked us to investigate parklets. And we did. Took it to the Planning Commission, discussed it, kicked around the idea of trying to keep this simple and fun as a pilot project. Morgan Hall and Barbara Kohler became ad hoc Subcommittee, the member of the chamber. Morgan, being an acting member of the chamber, took it to the chamber, talked about it. That's where one of the members got interested. Barbara's talked to some folks in the town. We had a couple of informal meetings. And what you see before you is a strategy to do a pilot project. We're asking you to license Planning and Building Services to allow a demonstration project over six-month to a year period that might move from place to place. Morgan's looking at a prefab parklet that could be taken apart and moved, and then adjusted for the crown, the crown and the slope. The attachment is the very sort of minimum parameters that San Francisco came up with their flyer pavements to parks. There's some real sensible pieces of that, that even though we want to keep it light and happy, are sort of no-brainers on the physical side of it, as well as the legal side with insurance, managing it, and that it be available for all people in the public. So that's our recommendation, to give us the authority to do that. And then in a year's time, come back with a more formal proposal to you on how we could codify this, if everyone's happy with it. And legitimate parklets in some degree, if you all decide and the experiment goes well.
What it costs, have, has there been an assessment on kind of the cost that this would be for the physical parklet piece of it, as well as kind of staff and management?
We haven't looked at the administrative cost of doing this pilot project. You know, every time I'm on the phone dealing with this, we're burning staff time. But I try to keep it within reason. On the parklet cost side of it, it can be quite onerous. Some of these parklets can get quite expensive.
I've done some research. There's some really fancy ones.
They go up to 100,000 bucks quite quick. So, and as I mentioned in the report, they often are in and of themselves, pieces of art. What we call an urban design street furniture, if you will. But the idea is, I think, in the spirit of Fairfax and volunteerism, to make this fun. And, and to keep within those sensible parameters, ADA, insurance, who it's for, who's going to manage it, road and control, all these things you don't think of until you start to burrow into the details.
Great. Any other questions? Ryan?
I, I would say, after hearing some of the pros and cons when people were talking about closing down Bolinas for our last event, there was enormous support for the event after it happened. There were some questions before. There were still some people that weren't really happy about the effect, a few businesses. Have we had an idea of where we would put these before we take too much time? And also, would we be asking the businesses where we decided to put these if they wanted that idea before we went ahead and moved it? So if there was a business that didn't want this right outside theirs, but, I mean, is there background being done on where they'd go before we get too far?
Part of the chamber, chamber members, and I can't give you specifics, I was not at the meeting. One of their ideas was because of sort of how this could get touchy between different business operators and whatnot, was the idea of having it sort of move around, so it's a demonstration. If you looked in the attachment, San Francisco encourages multiple parties to come together, also to work with the adjacent businesses. And all those things are part of what you discover through a pilot project. So all the points you bring up are relevant, and that's, I think, what would be sort of ascertained through the pilot project. One thing about the street closure, I just want to articulate for a moment, where there was supposedly a parklet demonstration. It wasn't entirely a parklet demonstration. One is, parklets take a parking space and create public sitting area. A street closure takes the whole street and makes the street accessible. And second, the demonstration, as I, I was not there, but was at the surface of the street, rather than an extension of the sidewalk. You know, one thing, if you also noticed in the attachment, it calls for putting these, at least one space in from a corner. It's for practical purposes on turning radiuses, line of sight. I know, for example, the coffee roaster would love to have a wider sidewalk, and we would love to have it so that straws and bicycles can share a sidewalk. That's a different beast than a parklet. That's something that we will be coming to, I'm sure. And I've invited Deborah and Kelly to come in with an application, and also given them a heads up that we are eventually headed towards a town center plan exercise. And that more bulb bouts, as long as they're ADA, more bulb bouts are a good thing. And, and it always comes down to eliminating parking spaces, which is the rub. And that's a flip side of the whole town center plan process, is that you've given us license now to look at aggregating parking to its best advantage use of the town, so that the merchants have adequate parking, so the town's managing its resource, and that people come to town, they're treated as guests, they know where to go, they park once, they do many things, are antiquated- Are antiquated old lots in the center of town where an owner of a building has no parking and couldn't possibly bring in a new user, because they don't know where they would park. A parking district allows that business owner to buy into the district to provide the parking that a new use in that building wouldn't otherwise have. And if you recall, we've eliminated highway commercial in town and rezoned it to central commercial, and part of the exercise with the zoning ordinance update will be a form-based approach that thou shall build buildings at the sidewalk edge that is pedestrian-oriented. Thou shall not put parking in the front. Thou shall create a strong street edge. And that's going to be the exercise we're going to be recommending to you. So decoupling parking and managed parking, where, when, for example, on the weekend, we have the, we turn into a ski village for bicyclists, we might want to incentivize people to stay longer by parking prices going down. I said prices in the sense that maybe we should, we will be discussing the possible benefits financially of charging, and doesn't mean you have to charge residents necessarily in a parking program, and it doesn't mean we have a problem all the time. If you recall Dr. Shoup's presentation in this room over two years ago, the parking guru who wrote the Bible, The High Price of Free Parking, said, "If you're not at 85% capacity, you don't have a problem." So we're really talking about the peak experiences, the peak events. I know there's a history with the parcade having at one time been paid parking. We have another big resource right behind us with the Pavilion Parking and all the hardscape in the Elsie Bank Corridor that's underutilized. So part of our mandate, thanks to you all adopting the Final General Plan, is to do our homework and present to the Planning Commission and you all a managed parking strategy. So that's a big, it's a big part of all this, finding rooms for the bicyclists, the pedestrians, and parking.
This is a great place to start. Any other comments from the council?
Just, you know, real quickly, I mean, part of it, too, is, is the experience in San Francisco is that the businesses benefit by parklets, because they're cooperative and they tend to benefit the nearby businesses. So, I mean, I think, you know, we should let it, let it go, let it bloom.
All right. Any, John?
Sure. I mean, my understanding is, having the immediately adjacent businesses be the actual sponsor of that is San Francisco's model, right? And are you talking about that with this pilot program also?
We're leaving it loose at this point and hoping to get collaborative relationships between the sponsors, and for them to have reached out to the adjacent businesses, so that there's no feathers ruffled, if you will, in this process. We also asked, in the details of this, we said we would like to be able to revoke these permits with a 30-day notice in case something goes south. The whole idea is to try this in a fun, lighthearted way, minding the details that we can't ignore.
Yeah. I mean, it's important and prudent, you know, to know it's not permanent. That's the main thing. Yeah, we found out with the streets for people afternoon, you know, and people were like, "Wait, is this permanent?" "No, it's an afternoon." And everybody loved it. Or everybody that I talked to, anyway. Yeah, I've talked to a number of businesses that are enthused about this idea. I can only imagine, it being Fairfax, there's an equal number that think it's a terrible idea, but that's the interesting exercise. Yes, and that's Fairfax. But, yeah.
Any comments, sorry, comments from council, or comments from the public? Come on, do it.
20 U7 for us, Terrace, Fairfax. I had a couple of questions. First question was, I had a concern. Is the curbs that we have in place, in which they'll fit into, are they in good enough condition in which you can, you put these things up against the curb and stuff and have, let's see, it still be level and ADA and all that still meet up? Because the streets look pretty bad out downtown, you know? They're not very level, and they're sinking and stuff. So I was just wondering practically, will they work with what we have?
Well, they'd have to. Otherwise, we wouldn't be putting them there, and our building official, Mark Lockaby, would be in charge of making sure that they're structurally sound, that they meet ADA requirements. That's why they're dissuaded in San Francisco on steep slopes, and they have to be accessible. They have to have a certain gap between the curb and the structure itself. They have to allow water to flow along the curb. They even mandate that you have to wash out every so often, because the rodents love to go under there and create nests and homes. All these practical things. The beauty of a pilot project is, you know, you get to launch something without answering all the questions. But as far as building code compliance and safety, we will make sure, vis a vis these parameters, as well as our building officials' licensed review of these things, that we proceed safely.
And then the other thing was, is that I'm not into having the town close the street down there so that no traffic goes through there, but this is definitely a good alternative to it, you know? But the other issue is the parking. And I, you know, I mean, as Fairfax is expanding into, I guess, other people's lives, there's a lot more people come here, and it's awful hard to find parking on the weekends, you know? You gotta drive around the block, and you can go up to Pavilion and park up there. So, I mean, how will we address the amount of cars that we're going to continue to have here? And we don't really have the parking spaces to put them.
Well, I really appreciate your asking these questions, because a managed parking approach, à la Dr. Shoup, who was in this room a little over two years ago, and I have it on tape, is exactly the reason you want to, going the managed parking route, you decrease people circling around for that one open space, which I do at luncheon Santa in Somo. You direct them to where the free parking is. You right-price the curb when it's over 85%, so that ideally you have one space open. If you're willing to pay, it's open. Okay? It's dynamic pricing. If you're going to sit at the Fairfax for four hours with your computer, walk across the street, I mean, go to the free parking across the street. You incentivize people to, if they want the free parking, go a little bit further away. If it's handy, disabled parking, they have carte blanche. Maybe a resident parking pass is another piece of this. But, and I look forward, you should be involved when we have the Town Center Plan process happening, because in fact, the pedestrianization of Bolinas Road is called for in the New General Plan to be explored, and it is going to be, I think you're a perfect example, it is going to be a very contentious discussion in town. And the final decision will be up to the Planning Commission and the council on whether they want to go with a convertible street, if you will, sort of like Maiden Lane.
Let's stick with our topic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's an incredibly one conversation.
Stay tuned.
Parklet, parklet questions, please.
The other one is, is that, and why do we have our parks? Our parks are the place where we go and sit and eat our stuff and hang out. So why is it that we have to create these little parklets, so that people can take up a parking spot and, you know, sit, I guess, outside of a business? But we've created parks, and that's what our parks seem to be for, so.
Quickly, yes.
It's a good point. Parks come in all types of shapes and sizes and uses. I would label this, even though it's called a parklet, it's sort of a play on words that you're turning a parking space into park space, but really, it's streetscape. It's street furniture, it's streetscape. And I don't think anyone can argue that our sidewalks on Bolinas are too wide.
No, they are rather narrow, aren't they? But, I mean, it'd be nice to see that the private take up the cost on this, because, you know, as it stands, we have a lot of infrastructure stuff that needs repairs and work, and I think the money could be more spent in addressing those.
And just to be clear, we're not proposing that we pay, the town pay for the parklet. We're paying for some staff costs to try this with a pilot project, so we don't spend all the time on drafting an ordinance and thinking through every if-then-then, but until the town decides through this pilot project that this is a good thing, that it increases the bottom line for the businesses which pay the taxes, that improve the sidewalks that need it so bad.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Closing public comment. I think we've got consensus to direct you to move forward with pilot. Is there any opposition to that?
No.
Okay. Good. It's exciting. It's, the ones in San Francisco are delightful, and I enjoy them. Do we have to, I don't think we have to take a vote. Is it not a?
It's to, it's to.
To direct staff.
Yeah.
You're directed? You feel directed?
To direct and direct.
Okay, good. Okay. Our final item is approval of Town Council meeting scheduled for 2013, and closure of town offices from December 26th through December 28th. I think at this time, we might also want to bring up, it is somewhat of a tradition when the changing of the guard happens in December, and I don't know if we only do this on election years, or if we do this whenever there's a changing of a guard. Sometimes there's a special meeting to do the, hmm?
We could do it at the regular December meeting if there's not an election.
Okay. I wasn't sure with that. Okay. Is there any, I don't know if you want, what else? I think it's fairly, are there any questions about the December date changes?
I just, the changes, it's pretty simple. We've closed between Christmas and that week, because we have two days that are closed for the holiday, there's just three days. There's actually only two days that we're open to the public, so we're asking that that be closed in town. Staff can take time, available leave days to use it up. The only other change is a change in the 2013 council meeting scheduled for two meetings because of the January 2nd. We're asking that it be January 9th, and the July 4th holiday, we're asking that the July meeting be on July 10th. So those are the main changes.
Those seem to make perfect sense. Any questions?
I mean, I think we do this every year, except for the July one, so I would second.
Okay. Motion, Wainslaw, second. Read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I would also like to ask for a motion of our adjournment in memory of Stephen Kent Belik and Tony Kaborah, lost to our community. Motion, O'Neill?
Second.
Second. Read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Pen return.